Good evening, welcome to the working meeting of the combined Halifax and Plumpton boards of selectmen, town administrator, town coordinator, and fire chiefs. And we're just going to be sitting here working, talking about the possibility of...
The safety of our communities.
The safety of our communities.
Absolutely.
Combining efforts for anything we can think of, basically, and that's what we're doing. I'm not really chairing this, we're just talking, so...
We're on the clock, right?
Yeah, we're on the clock.
You're going to do your...
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Our little blurb. This meeting is being recorded for cablecast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record.
Do you want me to...
Yeah, because you guys need to call your meeting to order too, right?
Oh, then that would be toyed with.
Okay.
You're on, kid.
Why? I'm a visiting team, I shouldn't have to say anything. On behalf of the board of selectmen from town of Halifax, we greet you and we are being taped by Area 51, and it's more like 58. And I think they have their open house this Saturday, right? To give them a little plug. So, that's it.
Okay. Do you want us to start?
Sure.
No, just because I know that you have approached us to look at the possibility of providing ambulance service. And typically, we have a separate committee that we call the fire study committee. And that's a committee that we typically will dive deep into data, and as you all are aware, we just added staff to our fire department this summer, and we were able to increase ambulance rates, which gave us the ability to add additional staff and coverage, and that has been a very positive thing, progress, for both response times and just building of the call department, and gives a lot of incentive to get people to want to be involved. So it's been nothing but very positive. So what we did, because we weren't really sure what you were looking for, is the chief worked on three different options, and again, these aren't the only options out there, but these are just sort of three things that you can think about and we can talk about. And you can have time to, you know, absorb them all, or if we get into a discussion where you say, "You know what, I actually like this option," then it's something that we can do, is reconvene our fire study committee, and then really get into some deep numbers and sort of confirm everything, and then we can re-meet, and this is going to be, you know, a general process to be able to determine whether it works for both your community, but it also has to work for our community, that our residents have to, you know, be able to maintain the service of which that we've worked so hard to achieve.
Absolutely.
And it's been a long process, and we're very, very proud of the department and our chief, and really that it's been meaningful in that.
Just for the young man over there.
It's really the morale there is just tremendous. So, I'm going to actually turn over, if you don't mind, Chief Basari, I'm going to turn over the three different kinds of options. There's one we're not crazy about, but we'll get to that, but we actually have another option. We're going to... Chief?
So I think everyone probably has a copy now of an email that I sent to Chief Basari today, I met with him earlier, just to give him an idea, you know, he had approached me probably about a month ago, saying it's, you know, and we talked a lot about the issues that Plumpton was facing, which is, we were very familiar with, because we face them in Halifax also, and we have a lot of similar type of problems. So I had a month to think about it, and I thought about three different ways that the services could combine to provide a better service for the residents. So, actually, I'm not told all the things I need to know all my documents.
And then when we talk about combine, we can talk about whether, you know, as you're aware, we are, and you are, in contract with Duxbury for your dispatch, I think that we see that as the same sort of thing as we do on a contract.
So, option one would be to, we have two ambulances that are at the ALS level in Halifax right now. Option one, we staff basically one and a half, so we have three people on duty. The first call comes in, and that ambulance goes out of the ALS level, and then we recall someone to come in for the second, and we recall one person for station coverage. And if we get a second ALS call, that ambulance responds ALS. And I'd say that we've been pretty successful with it, but there are times when we don't always have a recall person. We haven't had many instances where we don't have anyone come back to man it, but I think if we were seriously talking about looking at this lot of, you know, this big area, that we should have that second ambulance available and ready to go. So instead of using recall to cover that second ambulance, my recommendation would be to staff that all the time.
Did you say though that your second is at ALS?
It's ALS also, yes.
So when you call the person back, they're paramedic you call?
So the person we leave behind, so we just went through a lot of changes over the past year, and one of the things was, I wanted to have a supervisor in charge of every shift. So we have a captain or lieutenant who's there 24, you know, they're on duty 24 hours a day, and with them is two firefighters. One is a, usually one's a paramedic, the other one can be a paramedic or an EMT. The first, we can work, we work on the paramedic, EMT, we've worked, paramedic EMT is still as an ALS ambulance. So that, the first ambulance, once that starts to transport to the hospital, we call one other person back. The officer, the captain and lieutenant stays back at the station, they don't, so they, once they transport, they only transport with two people in the ambulance. The officer returns to the station, and all of our officers are paramedics. So it's automatically going to be ALS, no matter who comes back, whether it's a paramedic or an EMT.
That's the same as us?
Similar. Of course, I will stay back, I am not a paramedic, so I will call back a paramedic if I can get it to staff that second call.
So, like I said, I felt that it was important to, if we were to cover this large area, to have both those ambulances available and ready to go, instead of, you know, rolling the dice on getting some callback coverage. And the things I passed on, I didn't include talking about costs, I just put the, so I don't know if we want, we're even talking about...
Well, let's just sort of do an overview, because then when we talk about, I guess our question for you is, what is your typical response time, and what do your residents...
Our average response time is 5.7 minutes on scene.
On scene?
Correct.
With a paramedic?
That's correct, yes. First call.
And then, so, your house, you have, covers 24 hours?
Right, correct. We have two people on standby in the station 24 hours a day. We are a PB service, so at least one of them has to be a paramedic. Quite often there's two, depending on schedule.
Okay. So this first option would just be us covering from our station?
Right.
And so, I don't know if you want to talk about, you've done some driving to sort of figure it out?
Yeah, I did some drive, I actually did some mapping, and I looked at, if you just look at the two lots of land and where the stations are, they're actually in ideal locations for each community, but there's a good portion of Plumpton that Halifax can actually get to quicker than Plumpton can, and the same vice versa, there's a, you know, portion of Halifax that Plumpton can get to quicker. But I know from, so I drove, you know, did some driving with my, just with traffic, no lights or sirens, you know, from here to the Halifax fire station, we're roughly around five minutes. When we get down to the Carver line, which would be the far end for us, we're around eight minutes to the Carver line. So, and that's driving with, you know, no lights or sirens, no lights or sirens on. So that was basically option one, and we'll get back to the cost associated.
No, we can talk about that.
You want to talk about that?
Yeah.
So, for our budget, just from, so we, I have an idea of your ambulance receipts, so I believe like last year was 108, 190,000?
No, it was 168 and change for 2015, for the snapshot you asked for, 168,996.
We had an estimate, 190.
This is for 2015 calendar year.
And what were you estimating for this year?
Well, it should be about 200, we're thinking.
200?
Yeah. We're not through yet, but based on the calls we got and the billing, the way the billing's going.
All right, so I used the number 190 as a, for our purposes, I used the ambulance receipts at 190,000. It would cost us an additional 200, just for staffing, not any other associated costs, but for staffing, we would have to increase our budget by roughly $250,000. So if we had, if we increased by 250,000, that would put me higher in two additional full-time people, and we've worked really, our union has been great in working with us, they understand the importance of training, you know, call personnel, having call personnel respond, and I know that they would be willing to do that with us again, like and increase the amount that we're using, which is a, not only has it been a great tool to help train the call people, but it's, you know, financially responsible, responsible too. So they're all cross-trained firefighter, EMTs, or paramedics, and the training level makes no difference. So we asked, using the additional cost of 250,000, rough numbers, and taking in 190, if we were to do the transports, 190,000 in ambulance receipts, our budget would have to increase by $60,000. So that would, like I said, that would reflect some other things that we'll talk about later, just the basically salary, salary and training and those types of things.
Just wondering, of the 190 revenue, how much is covered?
I don't have, I can't break that out, like, hold on, I might be able to.
10%?
It could be as much as 10% now, that they've increased the cost to us.
So we cover a piece of cover, which you probably wouldn't be able to get to?
Right. So it could potentially be 10%, not 20,000.
Right.
On the other...
Yeah, I was just going to say, when we really start to look at this, if we get that far, when we start to really examine it, we'll get, we'll really dive very deep into that, and we're also going to dive deep enough to say that, you know, our administrative person is going to be doing more ambulance billing, therefore, a piece of that would also be needed to be covered. So these are just, as the chief said, broad numbers. So but that's important to know, that those receipts could be lower because of Carver.
Sure.
And that's certainly part of our mutual aid agreements with the towns around us. We now have one with Kingston also, which has just been put in place too.
Okay. And does Carver have the same ambulance fee structure? Yes, it does.
It does.
Okay.
So, yeah, okay, I'll just, you know, the other part of it is, like, the in-house ambulance billing, we do in-house ambulance billing, we use CompStar, so you're, well, you know, if you're paying 12% on $200,000, I mean, I'm sorry, 6%.
We're at 6%.
6%. 6% on $200,000, I mean, I think we estimated, when I talked to Patty, who does our billing, you know, maybe it would cost, take her a three to four hour increase in work per week to be able to do that, which would be the savings, you know, the savings.
Yeah, about 6,000.
Roughly 6,000, 6,000 savings there. And then the other thing is the licensing fees for the computerized software that you use, I don't know what you're paying AmbiPro.
It's, well, it's part of our CompStar agreement, it comes with it.
It comes with it?
It does, yeah, we've engineered that deal, yeah.
Okay.
Thank goodness, yeah.
We use ImageTrend, and that's all, it's part of our billing software, so it's not, there's no additional expense in that. Option two, you know, we, this was based on, when all, every community, not your call volume drops off, and it's all, you can, I can take Plumpton's stats next to Halifax, next to Duxbury, and you see the exact same thing. It's 8:00, 8:00 a.m., call volume spike, and at 6:00 p.m., call volume falling. And in the overnight, you know, it's like 3 to 1 sometime ratio of what you, you know, what you do during the day versus what you do at night. So in this particular option, we maintained, we added personnel to Plumpton, that we put two people in an ambulance, an ALS ambulance in Plumpton during those hours. We, pretty much, everything in Halifax pretty much stayed exactly the same, except at night, this ambulance would, at 6:00 p.m., this ambulance would close, and everything would run out of Halifax. And we would just bring in that one extra person and run two ambulances out of Halifax during those 6:00 to 8:00 a.m. hours.
So you would save two people in Plumpton, but you would, what would happen in Halifax?
So during the day?
At night?
At night, we would, right now, we have three on, so today, currently, we have three on, 24/7.
And that would stay three?
During the day, we would keep three in Halifax. At night, we would move to four in Halifax, because we will...
So you did.
So we have that second ambulance ready to go. So that would result in us having to put, Halifax putting on some additional personnel, four full-time people, and then an additional call spot. So we have one spot that's pretty much every night of the week that's reserved for a call, call personnel. We would make a day spot that's also reserved for a call, a call firefighter. So, you know, we use them interchangeably, but we would have obviously a paramedic, two param, you know, paramedics in both, both stations, Plumpton and Halifax during those daytime hours. That would, the additional cost for us would roughly be 408,000, like I said, we were using 190,000 in ambulance receipts to do that, and that resulting, we would need an additional 218,000 to cover that.
That's a tough option, I think, from a management standpoint, because, you know, you're moving our staff to another location who's responsible for the management of that, so there would need to be clear...
Sheena come in.
Yeah, and it would be, need to be defined in such a clear way that there's no question that we're contracted, you know?
Yeah, I think that would, to me, this is my least attractive option, because it could get really complicated. And we have, you know, me and Chief Basari talked about this today, if we have two Halifax people working out of the Plumpton station, how their responsibilities, you know, simple stuff, just daytime chores that we have them, you know, doing at the station, stuff, how does that work? I think that would be a little complicated.
Very complicated.
And the third, the third option is basically to maintain three personnel in Halifax all the time, two people in Plumpton all the time, ALS coverage in both towns, 24, you know, 24/7. Like I said to Chief Basari today, if this was a model that we wanted to look at, at that point, in my opinion, it only makes sense to regionalize the fire service and the ambulance service. We have, because there's, I could see, I personally can see, from a financial perspective, there's much more advantages to that, because now we're getting rid of duplication of efforts on engines and buildings and those type, and those types of things. And the price really doesn't change, because we use cross, all of our staff is cross-trained, firefighter, 1, 2 certified, and either EMT or paramedic. So it doesn't change the staffing dynamic at all. If we have two people in Plumpton, they're able to respond in the engine or the ambulance, whatever's needed, and we run it pretty much, you know, one, it gets run as one community. And, you know, we have an officer on duty, if there's an incident that goes, that happens in Plumpton, he obviously responds to Plumpton, you know, responds to Halifax incidents. I think there's opportunities to have more resources coming, if there's a reported structure fire, we'll both stations head to that structure fire simultaneously. Motor vehicle accidents, you know, I've worked in a department where we have multiple stations, and we always ran it with the closest ambulance and furthest engine, that's how we responded to motor vehicle accidents, but it gets the resources there quicker, there's some more tech, you know, technically there's more financial savings doing it that way. It wouldn't really make sense to me just to put those people down here and have them limited to EMS. I mean, we could do it, but the number doesn't, wouldn't change, and the savings really wouldn't be there. So that would be, using the number of 190,000, we would be at an additional, just for personnel, at 50,000, 500,000, roughly 500,000, 501,000. So it would cost the town of Plumpton, just for personnel, 310,000 dollars.
So take me through the numbers again on that, how you get to the 500,000?
So 500,000 would be adding four additional firefighter, paramedics for 315, 315,000.
So over, four additional over how many?
Over, I'm using Halifax staffing now.
Yeah, right. How many do you have?
Well, right now, we have, we have 10 full-time staff, so we would, the increased staff, we would add four more.
Can these be hot, going full-time or a brand new?
These would be full-time people, and then what we would do is open up another position for call personnel. So we would, we would have an additional, right now, we would keep the call, the person we have working, right now, we have one call person that works every night of the week from 8:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. We would keep that in place, and then we would add an additional call position for the day, so, which we don't have now, but that's how we would come up to five people on duty all the time. So we'd have two, we'd have an ALS ambulance in Plumpton, well, an engine and the whole works. In Plumpton, we'd have the same in Halifax, and then we'd have a shift commander, they call a shift commander, who basically oversees both stations in any incident that goes on.
And how much of that 500,000, that assumes that there's no cost in Plumpton then? Or that there's still additional two people cost?
No, the 500, 500,000 is personnel costs, and then we minus the ambulance receipts of 190,000, coming out with 310,000.
Right, I get that, so I don't get where, you're adding three people at Halifax?
Four.
Okay, the call.
Well, not, not, when we say Halifax, in this scenario, I'm looking at it as the department, so it's not...
Okay, that's, that's, okay, so then now...
Yeah, not, right. Technically, those people would be for Plumpton, not for Halifax, I mean, to man this, this So, you know, with all things that, there's a couple, these are just three options, the way that I, that, you know, what came to me. Option three has some advantages. Most of the communities that I've looked at that have done successful regionalization of the fire EMS, first of all, I'll say that it's very rare. Yet, there's nowhere in Massachusetts that I've found that has done it. Hamilton and Wenham have looked at it extensively, they've paid for studies. Hopkinton and Ashland have looked at it, and they all study it, but at the end of the day, it's not even the numbers that don't make sense, that there's such a passionate emotional response.
Chardestics.
And that's why it doesn't happen, because financially, it makes sense, operationally, it makes sense, but emotion's a lot of times getting in the way.
Let's be straight, it comes down to who's in charge, and...
Well, sometimes.
Somebody taking my territory and it's going to change, that's...
People get territorial about police and...
And that's a typical New England stance, I want mine, mine, mine.
There's a great, you know, and the other thing that they found, a lot of these consolidation mergers don't necessarily save money in year one, they save, where the money is saved is in year 20, because now we don't have to, Halifax and Plumpton don't have to go out and both buy a fire engine this year. Like, right now, we're both, our departments are very similar, we both have to have jaws alive, we both have to have multiple fire trucks as backups, and multiple ambulances. Running as one department, we wouldn't need that, we'd need one spare ambulance instead of two spare ambulances. And, you know, even, you know, a monitor costs $30,000, you reduce the cost of that type of thing, and, you know, engines, those types, I mean, the bill on those things, hundreds of thousands of dollars, that are not, the savings isn't realized today, it's realized over the course of time. Chief Basari and I talked about the station. If we, if, if the stations, if in this plan, the Plumpton station was remodeled as a substation, there wouldn't be a need to build a new station. I mean, there may still be need to renovate the Halifax station at some point, and how those costs are shared are one of the complicated issues in pounding out these mergers, but there's a substantial savings.
Are you assuming renovation for Halifax or a new station?
I don't foresee any scenario where there would be a new station.
I don't see a new station.
I don't see that happening.
Okay.
Just renovated, put the new ladder truck in.
I didn't know if you had enough land there too.
Just got some swamp land, you'd want to buy some.
Can we talk again about the broadness of these numbers? These don't include capital things that we would need to talk about, these don't include supplies for the ambulance.
So we...
So those are the stuff that we still would need to sort of look into, but we wanted to get a feel from you. Based on these options, like, what do you think, what do you...
How much is your population expected to grow over the next 10 years, roughly?
It's fluctuating between, what, 8, 8,700?
We're at 7,500 still, and it may be a little bit higher than that, we grew almost nothing in the 10 years from 2000 to 2010.
I'd say 2% to 3%.
Which I found really amazing.
So you think it'll stay the same?
Well, a lot of people, when you look at, the younger kids that graduate from high school and college, they're moving out of town, which is, the head count really changes.
Getting younger families.
And the ones that remain, you know, a lot of the seniors and a lot of the families.
We're starting to see a bulge in just the beginning grades for the elementary school. Right now, we have a trough going into Silver Lake, the middle of the high school, our percentage of the kids there is going down. However, our K in 1 is, numbers are higher than our fifth and sixth grade numbers. So that would be an indication to me that we have more people than we had previously. We'll see how that plays out, but for instance, if someone said to me, "You're going to have 8,000 people there by, in four years," it's going to be higher than it was in 2010, but it won't be 8,000.
So nothing to add.
Excuse me.
Unless somebody walks in and basically South Halifax, because there's a lot of open space that's still upland there, there are a couple parcel owners, and, you know, if somebody decides to spur them on, "Oh, you know what, I'm going to build a huge housing development there," but no one's proposing that. All the developments we're seeing are 10 units, 12 units, there's one off 58 that's maybe 30, 35, something like that, but there's no major activity. So my guess is, four years from now, we'll see 7,800, maybe something like that.
Didn't we, I, maybe it was, somebody mentioned at a meeting, we thought we might grow to 3,500 over 10, 15 years, was that the number?
Boy, I saw you, you're going to have to put up a tent city to do it. I don't think, I don't think you're going to grow that much. I mean, we're still under 3,000 now, 20, 28.
2,800, I believe.
Yeah, 29 in round, in round numbers, I mean, you may grow by 300 more in four years, but that would be exceptional amount of growth, I would think. First of all, there isn't an awful lot of developable land left that way in Plumpton, we're underwater for the most part.
So roughly 3,200, like, max for a year?
How would you structure this under option three? In other words, you basically merged both departments completely together?
So there's a couple different ways that communities have done it. I'll give you an example of one that was a colossal failure, at least in my opinion, a failure, was Coventry, Rhode Island. They took, they merged all departments in Coventry, Rhode Island into one, they had created an independent taxing authority. So that, we see it, some of the communities on the Cape half it, where Bonsable, for example, have five fire districts, they fall underneath the water district. In Coventry, they created a fire district, but what happens in these fire districts is they create phenomenal fire departments, but their cost goes through the roof. And it doesn't get billed in necessarily to the towns, you know, people's, they don't, it's not tied to the towns' taxes necessarily, so they have a fire district meeting, and, you know, the chief proposes, "Let's buy three new ladder trucks," and they have a half a dozen people show up at the meeting, because the, you know, some of these have very low core meetings, and they get three very new ladder trucks, and they have an unbelievable fire department, but in Coventry, they watched, they watched the budget go from like three, I'm just throwing these numbers off the top of my head, it was like 3.5 million to 4.5 million to 6.5, and it just went, you know, tripled, didn't matter, you know, in the course of no time. That's why I would lean away from setting it up as an individual, as a, as a fire protection district.
Because we have, we have the benefit of Prop 2.5, which they don't have in Rhode Island, which has made their property taxes pretty much out of control over the last 30 years.
How does Prop 2.5 relate to the fire districts though?
Probably doesn't.
In here?
Because, well, like...
Well, yeah, you're still, I mean, you're still subject to what you can tax your people, it still falls under Prop 2.5.
So, I mean, but if you're, you're going to get charged, I mean, if the district, and it's like Silver Lake...
That's a fee, it's not a tax.
Right, same thing, they can set whatever the budget...
Well, it's not a tax, it's a fee, but it turns into tax.
Yeah, right, I understand.
But it could be raised over 20, something like that.
A share of regional...
Sure, but, but, yeah, but you're going to get cut at the other end.
Sometimes it's kids that they're all expensive on.
Well, that's true.
Right.
Only if the other two towns vote. If they don't vote, I mean, traditionally, Plumpton's voted against Silver Lake, only because, you know, by that time, Silver Lake had already passed and Kingston and Halifax.
This year, you have to.
Yeah. Well, I would say over the last 10 years, you would find that...
Have we touched on any benefits that the state might be offering if you regionalize?
Yeah, there's that.
And that's what I'd really be interested in understanding, where can the state...
So there's a, right now, there's a efficiency and regionalization grant program out there... So there's a, right now, there's a efficiency and regionalization grant program out there. It's short notice, the, the second round of it opens on January 1st, closes on February 1st, and if two municipalities join into that together, there's $200,000 to assist in the regionalization effort.
Is that a one-time deal?
One-time.
And this is state, state.
State, yep. But like I said, short notice, I printed a copy out for Kim. I don't know if Plumpton participated in the best practices we do, so that was one of the requirements of it.
Actually.
Oh, you have one, you have the same thing?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Um, yeah, who's eligible, all that.
We're waiting to do this by January 1st.
Yes, February 1st is.
Is it morning, three people in the room? No, it can't be.
So, one, maybe we should have started with this, and tell us, like, what were you thinking? Were you thinking that option one would be something that you would want to start with? Do you not want to start at all? Tell us a little bit about.
Well, my headset when we started this was that potentially it would be a statement similar to the regional school system. I didn't see any really major cost savings, just putting together the two, because we don't have any administrative costs to talk about, because we use a paramedic, basically, to do all our, get ready for our billing, our payroll, et cetera. That's probably a cost we're going to have to incur at some point, probably pretty soon. We've gone to ALS. I, I don't see where, by having the two stations, we're going to reduce personnel. In effect, it would be more that, looking at these options, the best we could do is maybe stay the same or increase, is that what I'm seeing?
You'd save money on option one.
Right, so, so under, uh, so, option one would make the assumption of, if I'm correct, your budget was broken down by EMS budget and for fire budget. I think it was 170,000 in the fire line item, and, yeah, three, roughly 340 in the EMS line item.
That, that doesn't take in the revenue.
Right, no, so, right, so you, so by offsetting, by, um.
Offsetting.
If you, if you, if you took out, even using the higher figure of 190,000, you're still at 150,000 to supply, to supply that. And where, and if it was joined with Halifax, it would be 60,000. It would only cost 60,000.
But, your response times, you know, we would be responding from Halifax, and so that needs to be something that you really think about and absorb, because that's, in order to save money.
John, maybe it would be, this copy actually breaks it down a little better with the problem.
But it may cheat, may not, because we're staffed all the time. I don't know if you are, have an instance where you don't, I know your staff is low at this point, correct?
We are, well, we've brought it back up again, we've had some people leave, is that what you mean, our total numbers?
Yes, you're a full-time staff, do you have?
Right, we do, we're back to some full-time and part-time staff, correct, yep.
So do you go, how often do you go to mutual aid?
Uh, almost never, actually, almost never. When our first truck is out, if I'm unable to, not unlike your town, if I'm unable to staff the second truck, this is ambulances, I will have to go mutual aid. It doesn't happen that often. Well, we're, hopefully luckily enough to get it, depending on who's around at what time, to fill that second truck.
So my understanding, actually from my, even from our conversation today, was, you can have that copy. Was, you have, was that Plumpton was having staffing issues now, and that, and I actually agree with Chief Bussar that that, those staffing issues can't be fixed without an additional 200,000. That was, and that's why we, and that was how I was looking, you know, how we looked at it when, when we sat down and put together some options and that type, and that type of thing. So, I'm not sure, 60,000, if that makes sense, if that, you know, if that makes sense for you, but from what I was told, from what I heard, was that, that's from your savings today, however, the service can't continue the way it is.
Right, correct. We, because we have some full-timers and part-timers, and then we have some call people, there's a, there's a resistance there, you know, medics working at a full-time rate, and medics working at the low standby rate, that there's, they're not getting along well. And as we've transitioned from all-call to combination call, on-call, full-time, part-time, there's been some problems, and some control problems with the staffing. And as a result of changes in the fire service, a shortage of medics, we're seeing people leave, and we're able to replenish them, but it's a, it's an up and down thing. Not unlike Halifax has gone through, as, you guys are a couple years ahead of us, it seems, as we've transitioned, as you've transitioned, still some of the same problems exist, retention of, of staff, especially the professional medics, the professional providers, that they have options to go to full-time positions in the fire service and the private sector, and it's harder to keep them on a call basis, a standby basis. So it's, it's a constant flow of employees in the door, out the door. So, and we're concerned that there is becoming a shortage now, even actually nationwide, and that, that raised some very serious concerns.
We found that, too. I mean, we definitely have had our issues in the last few years. We've looked, you know, we're getting the fire study committee, looked at a couple years ago, looked at the salaries and, you know, bonuses, and, you know, the different segments that they get from their service. And I know that that was an issue of even finding full-time people. You know, we tended to be a training ground, that we would get them and train them, and then they move on. But, you know, we're in a good place right now, I think.
I, I feel good about, our department, I'm perfectly happy, so nothing that Halifax needs to change. I think we're a little more attractive now, some, I don't, I don't think we're going to have any issues retaining our staff right now, I think everyone, everything's pretty solid there. I was sharing, Chief Bussar, we structure our call at night, we run it a little different, like, our call people get paid their full call rate the whole time, and I have, like, we don't have the staffing issue. So I have five, I have three, four people who sign up for shifts where I have to, like, weed them down to see who, you know, okay, you get this shift, you get this shift, but, but we have tons of people to choose from every night of the week, so it's, we don't have that.
Geez, must be nice.
It wasn't like that way. Right now, I'm just saying that that's how it is now, so we're, we're pretty happy with that.
Coming from a personnel perspective, there were a lot of people, just reservists sometime, by full-time military people, they're looking, reservists looking down, in the same attitude with, with full-time firefighters, we're looking at call firefighters, that you, you may fight fires with me, but you're not, you're not like me. You know, and I think Jason's personality has come in and changed a lot over the years, the last few years, we've changed that, and I think they work better together. It all comes down to personnel.
Well, and I also.
You know, and attitude.
You know, our memory is not that short. I mean, it was probably a year ago that we were trying to figure this out again. We had tried to look at it three years ago, we thought we were making progress, we weren't paying them what we, not that, you know, it's all about affordability, but at some point, that has to be a priority for your public safety and response times. And so, as Troy said, in the years past, we definitely have had, but I would tell you that right now, that it is one happy family. And I think what we did by adding that part-time position to the summer, that it gives a call person and such, because we constantly look at our call department and say, how do we engage them to respond? Because you, I mean, we still have some that you don't see for six months, but how do you engage them? How do you get that whole team philosophy? And I think, and certainly under the leadership of Jason, and, you know, the different ideas that we've introduced to the department, and the supportive town meeting, that was huge, by looking and saying, yeah, we want to support those extra positions, and we have really seen, it hasn't been that long, but we have definitely seen that turnaround, and we know that our residents have a great service, and we feel so good fitting that, because we're always able to. So, and we're your neighbors, if you need us to help you in a way, and this is why we're presenting this, if it's not something that you're interested in, that's fine, we're totally happy with the way that our department is on. We'll go right back down the street, and we can stay and talk about other theories that we can look at, to help each other out in different departments, but certainly there's no obligation, and if you just, just at the end of the night, if it's all just about learning new ideas, and about how we can, you can learn from what we've done, that's great.
Yeah, what's worked and what hasn't.
And, and we are learning from what you've done. What you are, the snapshot you are now is something that we're working towards, and the difficulties we have is the same ones that you've gone through. It's almost merit as we've gone along.
Well, and we just, you did the dispatch, you know, you've always sort of had, and you use 911, state 911 for your dispatch, and now we're solely going to Duxbury, and so that's another department that we were having a hard time maintaining staff and keeping that whole momentum, and we recognized for our community, it was going to save us enough money, and we were going to get a very.
A better service.
Duxbury, that, it's a very scary thing to give up that control, and we all kind of shake and.
Absolutely.
The whole situation of regionalization works well for education, because you have the same teacher, all your kids are going with the same teacher, same classroom stuff. When it comes to regionalization, the topography of the land, the population of the, and whether they have businesses, that all plays into a part, but it also goes into the personalities of people that are leading, you know, when it changes.
Right, and we know that, like, in the, the instance with Duxbury, with their dispatches, we feel all confident, I'm sure you do too, with theirs, with the way that they run their business and with the support of the chiefs, because we wouldn't have pursued it if the chiefs weren't interested in it. But again, it's a big step, so we recognize that, and so, you know, it's just, it's hard to manage with just so much money.
Absolutely.
It, it's something, I think, that New England finds it very difficult to do. I come from the Midwest, from Chicago, we have satellite offices, we have satellite station stuff, it's been that way for years, and in the South, too. Most, everything is regionalized, you know, so it's a, it's a mindset, philosophy, that people have to wrap themselves around, whether or not we could, if we can help, fine, as Kim said, if not, that doesn't make us enemies, it makes.
Oh, it's not.
On the same.
When it comes to town government, New Englanders tend to be very parochial, they like to keep it home, and they like to keep it close. And for as many similarities as the two towns have, we do have some differences, too, where Plumpton does not have town water. We're maintaining some equipment, we would be maintaining some equipment, we're not necessarily that familiar with, in terms of tankers and, and other response times. We've got, in this town, I say we, because obviously.
You're split personality.
Yeah, a little bit. But we have Cisco, that's another challenge, because that, that has a lot of new types of systems that we're not necessarily dealing with in Halifax. So there's going to be a lot of blending that happens if, if we go down this road any further. It's going to be, it's going to be a challenge, but it's certainly, everybody's up to it, so.
Like, one of the things we had, we talked about in our conversation today is, if you were to take a blank slate and say, this is the plot of land that we have, in theory, we couldn't place our stations in any better locations, it would be very easy for either of us to say, what do we need to run this fire department? And I think that it would come out looking something to like, what option three would be. How to make that act, but, that sounds great on a blank, on a blank piece of paper, with a, you know, a blank map. It's where the person, you know, there's a lot of emotion tied to the fire department, and that, I think that that is the number one challenge with that. So how to lead that, how to, you know, make people not fear, but embrace it, is the, is the challenge for people, because ultimately, I don't think anyone could dispute the fact that there's, that if it was successful, there's a possibility of major financial savings for both communities, especially over the long term, when you start reducing properties and not building stations and those types of things, is, the long-term impact of it, I think, would be, is important, but we've got to recognize that.
May I ask a question? How does your townspeople feel about the fire department and what's going on? Are they comfortable? Are they happy with the service?
What I.
Well, when we looked at the study to go to the advanced life support level, we, first of all, we had to explain and educate everybody, and that was a big challenge. And when we got out there and talked to people, they understood the level of service that they would like to have, as the other towns did, and their general support for us was that, you know, chief, we want you guys to do it, we want it to be healthy, because we looked at different options at the time. So then, as we went to that level and started the service, and increased our response times with some of the changes we've made, additional hires, additional qualifications, we've got to a point, I think we have a lot of happy customers in towns, and our response times are good, and we're doing it for a decent price. So I think overall, if I had to speak for them, I would say they'd be happy with what we're doing.
That, that's the main concern.
Well, I think one part of it is the cost, because we ran some numbers a while back, just so the chief could educate us on how, you know, ambulants were. And we came up with staffing cost of 344,000. We get 219,000, that was the revenue number we were using, but out of that, we have a bylaw that says we're going to put so much away for ambulance. So we figured an ambulance was 40,000 a year.
We wish.
Yeah. That changed.
That's 200,000 over five.
Easy, easy.
It's going, yeah, it's going.
We settled between, the figure the chief gave us and.
Right, right.
So maybe it's not high enough, but that left a net of two, and then we added in an uplift cost of roughly 100,000 dollars for all the administrative, et cetera, which meant that the station, even after putting away the money for the ambulance, was costing us 260,000, so called 260. The question is whether we're doing around calls of estimate 600 a year.
We're approaching, we're going to approach 600 this year, it's been going up 15, 18 percent per year.
We thought it took 800 to break even, 800 calls a year.
Is that because of the aging population?
It's 800.
Good part of it is that.
Like, 800.
You're not doing 600 transports a year.
No, no, this is total, everything.
But transports is what brings.
Right.
Yeah.
So how many transports do?
I can tell you that. Okay, is that on this page? I think we're at about 345 for this year so far. It's more, it's more than that, it is a higher percentage than that. Hold on, here we go. Uh, total 371 EMS incidents.
That doesn't show up in the statistics.
No.
My guess would be somewhere.
135.
I don't know. I know that we're seeing probably a return of a little over 1,000 somewhere on an ambulance call, because you have the medic, you have to conduct the medicare and all those types of things. So I'm guessing transports is probably in the, oh, well, all right, so 200, 206 ALS calls, 250 BLS calls, so 200, probably 256 transports.
Okay, okay.
Out of 600.
Out of 600 calls.
Right, right, total.
So the question was, whether the 600 could move to 800 to bring enough revenue to reduce the cost down to even, or something, you know, that wasn't going to.
Shut up.
Under 100,000. But the question is, maybe it's going in the wrong direction.
Well, if you go to 800, put in a number on it of 800, really doesn't mean anything, because we could do 200 more vehicle lockouts, we could do 200, and how departments account for their call volume is different from community to community, which is a little, sometimes frustrating. So, there are departments who will count a blood pressure check as a call, so I don't know if you, if you consider that a call.
No, no.
Some places will count inspections as a call, so not.
We don't, no.
It, it's not like you can look at every community and say, a call is a call, is a call.
That's right.
It's really not, it's.
Inspections.
We look at, if we looked at revenue calls.
Looking at, a bottom line of, how many people were actually transported to the hospital?
Well, I think you sort of thought 260.
250, so, it's probably my guess.
So the question is, what can that grow to if we do more of the cover and.
That, well, that, that's an unknown potential, depending on what's going on on any given day, what is their requirements for mutual aid, can they handle it themselves, and I think all towns try to handle it themselves.
Sure.
think all towns try to handle it themselves, it's a pride thing, it's a business thing also, it's a resource thing, so that's kind of an unknown number.
So it feels to me like the 260 is that we're netting out additional cost to the town, is not going to go down, it may even go up a little bit, the 300,000.
Well, according to Chief, Chief Bussar, I think you felt that it needs to go up.
It does need to go up.
But the problem is, and we had this when we were looking at
Where does it come from?
Where's the comfort?
Absolutely.
We can't really wish for more cities.
We can, but it's not
Right. It's not ethical.
We don't wanna have our residents be ill, but, you know, from a business standpoint, we rely on those ambulance receipts and on the staff, so, and you've gone and looked at the, I would go back three years and I would look at what your average is, because we certainly have had years that have been busier, more transfers than others, like, it depends, and then, you know, Medicare makes a big huge difference in your receipt, so do you have, we have a large community that
We have a very large Medicare
Yeah, my age group don't like that.
Yeah.
That's the other thing, and we're saying that we're gonna grow, but at some point the baby boomers are gonna be gone, and the population is smaller and younger, so then your receipts are gonna drop down again, they're not gonna get up there.
You still get football and soccer.
With the helmets and the
And the don't touch me.
Yeah, exactly.
What you would probably need to do is have a conversation with Chief Bussar and know what that number is that he needs, like, I know we talked about some numbers today, we, up until six, six months ago, we ran almost an identical situation, that we had two people on duty, tried to do 25, but our budget was 200,000 more, and even with that, we had retention problems and we had, we still had some obstacles to overcome, so how to do it at 500,000, I don't really have a good, I don't have a good solution to that, and I think that's why Chief Bussar is struggling with it.
Right, it's a control problem and for the things that we talked about, retention, about, you know, paying the call people at a standby rate and not being able to hold them as a result of that, some of the things, it's, it's based on your qualifications, they're standing by at a rate, certain rate for a paramedic at 10 dollars an hour and change.
10 dollars an hour.
Right, right, that's just at the standby, and then when they go out on a call, it goes to the
You now understand the staffing gap.
You need to look at that.
Right, well, and that's what we're seeing, that's where our problem is, and as we transition from, from a total call thing to a career call, that's the challenge we're seeing, and as we bring some of the hot times with full time
That was the problem.
It's sour grapes on the other side.
Sure.
As it would be, and they are, you know, especially on the paramedic level, they're EMS professionals, and they have many other options, both private and municipal, that they can exercise, so we're seeing a retention problem and a cost
The chief was explaining to me today, he can have two people on tonight, we're both paramedics, you're getting 10 dollars and I'm getting 20 dollars, and that creates
And that's
So I think, you know, obviously a 200,000 dollar increase, if I served on the finance committee or, you know, with one of the, I'd be like, what are you talking about, so, but I think at the end of the day, you need to decide whether, what your residents would want, whether or not they want to invest even more money, because I don't know that you can count on the revenues increasing unless you can look at a trend, but my guess is, as colleagues, I don't think that you can see that.
Yeah, but you have to look at the dead money, what I call dead money, money that you put into training for a person for six months, whatever time it is, and then all of a sudden that person leaves and you gotta keep replacing them, you gotta put that point across to the townspeople, that we lost 300 grand last year because the people didn't stay, we had to keep replacing them and at the same time, training them, equipping them with their equipment and going through the process, that's, that's one of the keys.
It's really hard to get volunteers for committees, we all recognize that, it's a struggle that we have is to get qualified people who will do different things, but about, gosh, Chief Carrick was here maybe before that, when we, no, it was actually when Chief Benjamin
Chief Benjamin.
Before we went by night, when we had call at night, we convened the very first fire study, and we engaged, I think I was on the finance committee then, and that's why I was a member, but if you could get like a little fire study committee together, somebody from the finance committee, somebody from the board of staff, and we have somebody from capital
Capital planning.
And then two people from
Citizens are large, yeah.
And then, you know, just kind of look into the data, like the chief obviously can do that, but I think it's good to get that collaboration, and especially when you have people from the finance committee and the board of staff, because, and I always put people on there, like, or try to engage people that may not necessarily want to be supportive of the idea, because then they end up
They start to get it.
And they get educated, yeah.
They get educated, and, you know, it may be something, I know it's hard to find volunteers, but it may be something worth looking at to say, which direction do we wanna take our town, do we wanna engage in a contract with another community, it may say this X amount, our service may not be that much different, but it's something that, then, you know, with everything going on, that's what we need to do, or do we wanna invest in our public safety area, because we wanna be the ones that, and we wanna be where, where help is provided, we're so happy.
From an outsider's view, it's gonna be, the difficulties you're gonna have is that your ambulance rates are already there, they're not gonna go up any, you can't collect any more than you already collected, we mimic that, thank God, and that's how we, we funded it, but you're already there, if you were to pick up even, through mutual aid, even 20 calls a year, that's only 20,000 dollars, like, and to me, 20 calls, additional to what you do, I know Chief Bussar's done a great job trying to almost solicit business from the mutual aid partners, but 20 calls, I think, would be a lot, like, but that, when you factor in Medicare and all those other things, that accounts for 20 additional calls, would account for 20,000 dollars, and that, and I don't even know where those 20 calls come from.
Right.
I mean, um, so.
I don't think we're really helping.
No, you are, you are. I think we have explore, combining with you, I like option three, and we have a duty to provide the best service possible to our residents, and I don't think it's gonna be done through the town or department exclusively, I just don't think that we have the money to do that, I don't think residents are willing to pony up to make that happen, but I think that they would be interested in looking at combining services to, to have better, you know, better response time, and to maintain, you know, what we need to do, I just don't think that we can do it on our own.
We saw in 2012, we did convene a study committee, we brought components from the finance committee board of selection
Oh, you did?
Yes, we did, and from the fire service, and also from private EMS residents and things like that, and it was a successful snapshot of where we were and what we needed to do, and the residents got involved with it, they saw the data, we had meetings, and we came to something together that was a great change, and got us to that level of advanced life support care for our residents.
That really took us from a contract to an
That's correct, right, we were in that transition.
I do agree we need to have another look with, I'm not sure, we do this, you, no, it's like you as a consultant, I was taking
I'm sorry.
I work for these
I'm sorry, you're not available.
We were watching your response.
Even just a half a day, walk through all the numbers to make sure we've got the template thrown out correctly, I'm not, I can't see option number five.
No.
If Plington people would feel comfortable having the response.
I just don't think it's your idea, either.
I'm always looking for freebie, I mean, do you do a lot of grant writing?
We do some, there's a couple of problems with grant writing, and I'm not exactly sure what it is, one I think is part of is our population's low and our call volume's low, and our level of equipment is rather high.
Well, see, that, I just wonder whether or not the feds, the feds would be offering any money for, to assist
For a couple of years.
Right, the safer grant is, it does staffing, and then the town, was it three years?
Two years.
But then you have to
We did that with the police department.
And then you have to commit, and that's the challenge that we really need to look at before we even were to approach that.
Well, and I know your budget, I know your finance committee, I know, you know, you're struggling, I know your population, I think, is staying the same and stuff like, but that's usually a driver, and so, you know, when you're a small community, and again, we are, as our chief just said, you're already maxed at your ambulance receipts, at your ambulance fees.
Billing rate.
We weren't, we were still charging low, and that was our way to kind of get out of it, you know?
And we were fortunate that the community supported using all of it for the fire department, because that could've went the other way, you know, we had one, I'm like, we have one shot at this, and luckily they supported that, because that could've easily went for another purpose.
It was the presentation.
Yeah.
That had a lot to do with it.
But we are lucky that that's the way that happened, you know, and it supports the fire department.
But one thing you have to remember, this is not a one-shot deal, it's something that you gotta stay at the top of on a continuous basis, you don't go before the town, because it's sort of like chopping a tree down, you gotta take a little bit, a little bit at a time until you get to where you wanna go to, because if you do it one time, you know what, as well as I do, people's memories are very short, because their, their situation changes, so therefore, they don't look at other things unless we keep it in front of them.
So you, so when you guys were having sort of a conversation, you asked me about option two and three, whether or not our fire study could look at it, is that what you
No, I think John
I was just saying, one of you personally, two, could just sit in as we go through the numbers, just to make sure we're, got the template of how we're looking at this.
Okay, I mean, I
I know, that should be half a day, I think, but then at least we could, then we can go off and start to think about it.
Kim's a high-priced consultant, I mean, you'd have to
No, no, actually, she's our dog of investigator, so I'm not sure she's qualified.
That's right.
We got the special flea collar for it.
TV series is a go, right?
Yeah, what did we say, my show was
Kim Roy Dog Hop.
Anyway, but I've heard on fire studies, this is an exception, like, 15 years ago, I don't know how many years ago, but, you know, I'm happy, if you are happy just to come and then
As long as
And then we can kind of figure out
Oh, absolutely.
And sort of guide you, and then if we ever get to the point, again, these were very broad numbers, and because I'm such a numbers person, I would wanna
Oh, yeah, right.
Have our
There's so much to it.
Right, so there'd be like, for example, for example, you know, under option three, you know, there's like probably, we threw out the number of
Three, 10.
And that's for fire and EMS.
That's everything.
But there's probably an additional 100,000 dollars in, at least in other fees, and then how do you come up with a capital budget, still far less than
Right, right, what formula would we use, you know?
There's a lot of stuff in the weeds there.
For things we'd need to purchase, yeah.
And you're gonna need to engage even more call force, I would think, and how do we help you engage call force, which is more training?
Under option three is one.
Yeah, option three is
No, but still, they would need to, you know, in the meantime, if you keep losing staff, we're gonna need to add on staff in order to train, so the training budget may be increased.
So one of the things that I looked at as an advantaged option, for, just from a department, and we spoke about this thing, firefighters are more attracted to go to a larger community and do more calls, by make, by, you know, and I think to myself, like, if we, if we have a larger department, it's gonna help in staff retention, it's gonna help people want to be part of the
The larger
And I don't, I think, that will, you know, we see people kind of flocking right now, that we're getting applications that we haven't gotten before, and we're kind of turning people away, I think, if there was truly almost double the size, I think we would have zero, virtually no retention issues, because people would want to be part of it, see other, you know, opportunities for them down the road, things like that.
More work, more interesting calls.
Right, yeah, sure.
That's a big problem for us.
Yeah, some variety.
And that's a big problem for us, and that's the reality, the fact, is you train, you train, you train, now you wanna work.
Well, yeah, we never
And we don't have, right, so when I have that, almost an equal plot of land where you have, you're doubling those opportunities, and, you know, the call staff gets to come back for more cars, and it's more thing, that's what these people
I know.
No, that's, that's the dynamic of it.
The call force in itself has changed so much, I say this all the time in Halifax, but if you look at our roster, we have a group of probably six people that have been there from, one of them from 1971 down to 1989, after 1989, there is no one until 2012, and what, I think it might even be before 89, but what happened, that's when everyone started to become career firefighters and EMS people, so those people that were on our roster during the, you know, those 20 years, they're still in the fire service, but they're working in Kingston and Abington and Plymouth and everywhere else, and everywhere else, but you don't see the long term, you know, we have five or six of them, and I'm glad to have them, they have a wealth of experience, but the new person coming in is not the 50-year-old or 40-year-old guy who wants to help his community, it's the 19, 20-year-old kid who wants to make firefighting his career.
Entry level, right.
We recognize that, and, you know, I say it all the time, we're getting a better product, we're getting something out of them by letting them be part of our organization, but we know eventually, you know, we only have so many full-time spots, they'll probably go, but just recognizing that, I think, is a important thing, that, you know, 30 years ago, people used to be able to drop their jobs at the drop of a hat and run to the fire station.
Right.
That does not exist in any, you know, maybe out west somewhere, but
Carver.
No, you know, Carver and Swansea are two
Very unique.
That come to my head, that are extremely unique communities, Swansea, where I'm from, I was a volunteer, it's an all-volunteer fire department, a community of 17,000 people, and they maintain, 100 volunteers that are active, I don't, to this day, I don't know how it happens, but I think a lot of it is just generational, like family, my dad grew up, and he was on the Swansea Fire Department, and his dad was on it, so now I'm gonna be on it, so they have a lot of that, but other than Carver and Swansea, I don't know if Chief Bussar knows any different, like, those are two very unique
Even nationwide unique.
Yeah.
Without a doubt.
Okay, so
That do not provide EMS.
That's correct, right.
Your idea is having a separate meeting during the day, that we would come and just sort of absorb, observe, and then just be here.
Yeah, we could go, yeah.
We could go over you, please.
Talk about numbers, yeah.
Could it rain you on lunch?
Whatever is easiest.
We did apply for a grant through Old Colony Planning Council to look at combined services and regionalization opportunities, we actually put all four towns down, and we got it, so we might be able to enlist the helpful Old Colony Planning Council to assist us in this process as well, I've got a meeting on Wednesday so we can reach out to them and have them contact you guys to, you know, see if they can provide some help too.
And then we need to know, we need to have a feeling that it's something that we would wanna pursue as well.
Well, it has to be a benefit to everybody.
Right, yeah, it has to be, right, beneficial to you as well, and, but it's, I think where we've got the regional school district, we're not, you know, we're familiar with each other, it's not like we're asking a town that, you know, Pembroke or somebody that, you know, we really don't have a lot of, have a relationship with, to come in and help us out, I mean, we're already partners in Silver Lake already, and
We're also both small, very, very small communities, we're a little bigger in numbers, but commercially, we're similar, we take all of our commercial equals publicly, but your Cisco is probably, you know, we have a very similar
Our geography, our, you know, and per capita.
Sure, that was like 1734.
You gotta remember though, one of the things that, having been in law enforcement for over 40 years, the type of people that come to look for fire department are looking for prestige, they're the same way with police departments, military, they're, they're action motivated people, I won't say they're all type A personalities, but they're close in what they wanna do, and they want recognition to do something to keep themselves excited, especially the younger kids that are coming in, and I think that's where the training comes in, and to keep them motivated, from the training stuff, but it's gonna happen, we can guarantee that everybody's gonna stay that goes through the training, we went through that with the police and with the fire department, you know, I mean, when I first came on board, we had one full-time person, and I was the chief, everybody else was called, you know, and the only problem with that, they were all family and
Yeah.
So, yeah, we can talk about other things, I don't know if we wanna keep him.
Are you on board for this too, floor again? Yeah, I mean, I, we have a lot of equipment, you talked about, we have some duplication and maybe we need to winnow that stuff out, you know, we, we have a committee going right now, studying the possibility of building a new fire station, police station first, but, you know, that's in the future, obviously, this is going to affect that, and we're gonna have to move on this before we make any other decisions.
Yeah, so you just let us know when you want, and we won't keep the chiefs here when we can talk about other issues, but, and then we'll just leave it that you'll let us know when you want to meet, and just throw out a couple of dates and
That sounds great.
We can figure it out.
Yeah, that sounds great, I mean, I think it's, it could be a really good thing, and for both of our communities, and, you know, a model for the rest of the state, I think that this is
We are trans-senders.
If nothing else, purchasing the same type of material, whether it be gauze or mayonnaise or whatever else from the apartments, and to go on, that, even in that sense, that's a savings
Better buying power.
Of a wholesale process, and individually, doing the same kind of thing, so even if we don't join as a regional thing, there may be other aspects that we can use to bring things out.
Oh, you got a call.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I heard it, yeah.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome, guys.
Thank you so much for coming.
Would you like this, you bet, okay, would you like to keep this?
Drive careful.
Nice to meet you.
Dangerous roads in Plington.
Yeah, bad news.
Don't speak.
Right, well, they will give you
Right, well, they will give you a ticket.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You bet.
I tell you to stay out of trouble, but I know what I should do.
Yeah, well, you know how that goes.
Yeah, that's his middle name.
I always tell people, the first three letters of my name is T R O, so I'm never that far in trouble.
Text me if you, never, doesn't have to be right away, but I'll talk to you tomorrow night anyway.
Holidays and house things.
But I'll be, I'll be around.
Okay, guys, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
You bet, guys, thank you.
Thank you, nice to see you.
Be safe.
Take care, buddy.
Yeah, let's talk about other things.
Basically, what, basically what you want me to do is take people, drive across the border, and drop them in Plymouth, so we have a...
Camliss Run.
Is that okay, would you mind?
I'm just wondering if we ever got paid for that land.
Seventeen thirty-four, okay, here.
Lot of interest now.
Here, I'll look up a randy, there you go. Get my watch.
Your watch.
Don't sell me.
She has been hanging out.
You guys are gonna sell me to Plymouth, aren't you?
Yes, we are.
On your payment, and then they'll bring me back, they'll leave me on town clerk.
That's assuming they take it.
That's right.
Oh, we would take you.
They might take me, but then they'll return me.
When they realize what they have.
Just keep your receipt.
Well, it's funny, I was walking into the fire station the other day, you know how they have the sign that said, where the official, I think it's a baby haven?
Yeah, right.
And so I walked in the chief's office, I said, is that true for selectmen if somebody dropped me here? Would you take me in?
It might be somebody's baby, but that's what I can't really take.
Thank God, I'm somebody's baby. Okay, so, do you have any other ideas you want to talk about?
We had talked about, actually Charlie and I had gone back and forth last year about possibly, possibly combining animal control.
Oh.
But I never got a budget from her, so we couldn't really pursue it.
Okay.
But that might be something that we want to look at, is combining animal control.
Yeah.
Or, I mean, the thing, what I think I've mentioned about that, though, is I think we had no problem having her work for you, just as at various times Tom worked for both communities, I'm not sure that we, you know, if there's an advantage to going quotation marks regional, that's fine, but one of the things that's crucial for us is, once we hit the twenty-hour, boom, health insurance, and leave, and everything else, and we're still, I would say, considerably below twenty hours a week, not, not it's five hours a week, but it might be fifteen or something like that.
It's probably about fifteen, depends on, like, right now, if, if she's knocking on dogs, I mean, dogs, she's knocking on doors for dog licenses, then her hours are gonna be, you know, increased, so it depends on the, on the season, but she's...
She's, she's put more hours in with this recent dog.
Yes, with this recent issue, absolutely, but we, we're offset by our dog fees, and so typically, it doesn't really, we don't, right.
So, but I mean, I can send you, if you're looking for...
What she would charge hourly, or...
Well, what I can do is say, here's what we're getting charged, here's our expenses and everything like that.
Okay.
And you can make, in essence, make an offer to her and say, you know, we're interested in hiring you for X number of hours, or, we don't even hire at a certain number of hours a week, we simply budget, and it's, the hours might be five hours one week and fifteen the next, so that we're not paying a set amount.
Yeah, we don't budget much, I don't know, what do we, like, what, fifty-five hundred dollars?
Well, the one thing that would come into play is, we're at the dog fee cap, we're gonna have arrangements.
No, I don't believe we do, no, we don't have a kennel.
So, what I would do, what I would do if I were you?
Millborough.
Middleborough, I think, is what we're...
Millborough, Lakeville.
Lakeville's where we've got ours.
But you have a kennel, correct?
We do, but it's only good for a couple of days, and then after two days, it goes to, yes, it goes to a long-term quarantine. Yeah, yeah, we're working, yeah, it's not a bad setup, though, it's not a terrible building.
Is she an employee or subcontractor?
She's a employee.
She's an employee?
Yes, she is.
And you just do an intermunicipal agreement where it works, and, and, and you build the town of Plymouth, and Halifax takes care of our dog operation, and for X amount of dollars a year, we did that in a past community.
Again, as long as the number of hours doesn't consistently go above twenty, that's a possibility.
Well, what I'm curious about is if somebody could look at what your dog, like, receipts are for your licenses, so that we can get an...
I think that goes with town clerk, doesn't it?
Yeah, because then we can get an idea of how many dogs you are in the game.
Okay.
And Kim could walk in.
Good dog, bad dog?
We don't have a monkey in that circus room.
And then, you know, we can kind of have an idea, right, and then, yeah, we could have the idea of that.
Dog officer expense, fifty-five hundred dollars.
Okay, ours is twenty-one thousand, because I looked at it a little bit ironically.
Mike will probably tell you the receipt if you're in there.
In her report, but this is two thousand fifteen, but that's the closest.
We don't have many more dogs.
All right.
We don't have many more people, so we don't have many more...
You've got more dogs than you've got people.
We should do a horse license.
Oh, yeah.
Good luck with that.
When Jill was here, you had more chickens than you had properly.
That's a fact.
All right, animal control, two hundred forty-eight calls, fifty-six routine inspections, five animals ordered quarantine, two dogs brought to shelter, twenty-seven dogs returned to owners, seven unattended livestock removed from public ways, but that doesn't add up to two hundred and forty-eight.
Do you want me to take a picture of that and email it to you?
Sure.
I'm gonna do that.
Yeah, I think I actually sent that to Dory, so she had an idea of what the workload would be.
Oh, you did? And you never heard any?
No. Yeah, I haven't gotten to that one yet, hang on, sorry. I'm just gonna take a picture of it, it's easier than photocall.
They have a livestock checking on that, which...
Well, that's, that's under his, he's the inspector of animals, okay, which is, he gets other money for that, yes.
We have a different person handling animals.
Yes, barn inspection.
Domestic.
All right, town clerk.
Dog bites.
Again, another employee.
Our dog licenses, three thousand one hundred and twenty dollars, three hundred and twenty spayed or neutered, thirty-seven male or female, five hobby, I'm sorry, five kennel license, three hobby, three commercial kennel licenses, and one free dog, one free service dog.
Oh, it was a ser, oh, you give service dogs.
And he's no longer in town.
The dog or the, the individual?
The dog, you moved a, okay, thank you.
The owner goes with it.
We couldn't afford to keep him.
I'm not gonna touch that.
So, it's costing us about two thousand dollars a year, is that...
Four.
Fifty-five hundred for the...
Yeah, about two thousand dollars a year, and, yeah, but right now, everything's going to Tara, not, yeah.
Okay, and it's not going to be buy a dog officer, get a dog investigator for free. You're not a package deal?
I don't know.
I'm sorry, you have to go to Halifax for all the dog hearings.
I keep moving you to do that, Kim.
No, all right, I'll do it.
And we, well, if we go that route, that I vote, then we have the dog, animal control officers do all the hearings and all that.
Yeah, okay, so animal control, we can look at that, and we can get back to, is there another area which you are kind of...
What about town accountant?
Yeah.
You've got a full-timer? Okay.
Yeah, full-timer, and I think...
Gene's full-time.
Okay.
County?
Yep.
Why are you thinking town accountant?
Because when Barbara retires.
Oh.
You allow people to retire in this town?
Mention as, as something we could share.
That we could share that, right, with a, a community that had a full-timer.
And our current town accountant's way under twenty hours a week, at this point, I'm not even sure exactly how many hours, but she's way under twenty hours.
She's eighteen and a half, because that's, that's all she can do, she's retired under Plymouth College, so that's what, she works eight.
What do you guys do for human resources?
That's a good question.
Yeah, well, we have the same answer.
We don't have a lot of humans, so that's, I mean, it's a small, it's a fairly small operation, so we really don't, I mean, I cover some of it, Selectment Secretary covers some of it.
The treasurer's office must have...
Treasurer's office covers, covers, health insurances and that sort of stuff.
That's how I started, was in wage and personnel.
Yeah, but we don't really have, you know, we don't, again, it's, well, you know, you've been in this area a lot longer than I have, it's just that, it takes X amount of, X amount of stuff to cover whatever the area happens to be, when you talk about police or fire, you need to accomplish a certain goal, so, and, and when you're a town of three thousand people, and a town of seventy-five hundred people, a lot of times, the amount of money involved in providing those services is virtually the same, it's just that our pie is a lot smaller.
Yes.
When you start cutting it up, so of course, it affects the tax rate, and, and the same thing with, you know, there's some software solutions that we'd like to do, and sort of like that, but it's, it's really expensive.
Depends a great deal, what you're looking for to do to human resources.
Right now, Charlie does a fair amount of it.
Um, the treasurer's office handles insurance.
Yes.
Retirement, yeah, depends on the question.
So, it's sort of split.
It's split up, yeah.
Kind of the same.
We've tried in the past to create a position.
Town's not happy.
But, it's, it's so soft, quotation marks, the, people say, well, we've had people say, well, the department head should handle all that, as if they're trained to handle all that.
And, and that's the area in which you want a human resources person to handle the delicate issues, and to advise staff, typically, we end up going to council, labor council, and then that's...
That costs more.
Which has been, yeah, but I...
Which works.
Yeah.
But, you know, that's another layer of cost.
Well, it does, but I think we've been judicious, despite the fact that our legal budget's out of whack for this year, because of a number of factors, but, um, my feeling has been, we've been judicious about using it when we need to, and even if we had department heads, I'd be going back to council.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I understand.
But, but I mean, there are certain aspects of human resources that having a person on
board could take care of on a daily basis, where we don't have to go out, and many times, those things don't become a problem, because they're handled correctly.
When you say human resources, does that cover your fire and police, or are you saying that's sep...
Well, it covers everything.
It covers everybody.
Yeah, because there, I mean, some stuff for the fire, police, or the highway, for instance, is union stuff, and I'll deal with that, or if we need to, we'll bring the labor council, and the selectmen handle, you know, or participatory parties in the negotiations, but if we're dealing with a discipline issue, which can be a union, but then you still bring, you know, you, it's still, a discipline here is different than a discipline in there, because you may have a contract in one place or another, but given how the courts have ruled in the past, unless, you know, maybe there's a formal appeals hearing process or anything, but a lot of the steps are still gonna be the same, in that you will need to document, 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 for instance, so, if I want to fire this person, well, what documentation do you have, it doesn't matter whether it's union or non-union, if the, if the department head hasn't done their job in documenting why they need to fire someone, or why they need to discipline, if the evaluations, for instance, are consistently five, 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 being a highest grade or something.
Officer one day.
Do you have mandatory evaluations?
No.
Okay.
No. We have, the reason I asked about police and fire in, in school, basically, is if you take those out of the equation, we have twelve to fifteen people, everybody else is a volunteer.
So I was very interested to learn, a couple weeks ago, at a building committee meeting, I don't know if you're aware, we've been looking at building a senior center for some time, but I wasn't aware until recently that you don't have any paid staff on your council on aging.
Well, we do.
We have a director.
Oh, you, oh, she is paid.
Oh, minimum.
It's a stipend, it's fifty-five hundred bucks.
Is that something we...
Yeah, because I know up until recently, that, that wasn't true.
Yeah, she's actually retiring.
We passed it at the last time.
I was gonna retire in Plymouth, but you didn't have anybody to serve with me.
Well, so you don't do...
We're looking for a council on aging, uh, record.
We have a, we have a fairly large senior population, I don't know the number off the top of my head, I used to...
Wouldn't surprise me that we've got fifteen hundred to two thousand, sixteen plus.
Yes, I wanna say there was nineteen hundred.
So, you've got, what was the percentage that would be?
Four, I think.
Yeah, it's a, we have a...
What, added to population?
It'll be an atomic one.
It's closer, it's closer to, I almost, I would almost say fifty percent.
No, no.
Because you've got fifteen...
Almost three thousand, twenty-nine hundred.
Fifteen hundred is...
It's about a quarter, it's about a quarter.
Mobile home park down there, you got what, seven hundred?
I'm surprised you don't have more with the...
It's four hundred and thirty, you.
We may, we may.
No, no, I understand, some have two, some don't.
But my question is...
But you're saying, if you're saying half, it's thirty-seven hundred seniors, you don't have thirty-seven hundred seniors.
There's a lot of us old people around, so don't push it.
Well, yeah, define senior.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, I can get, I can get a discount.
I can get it, I'm definitely...
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at, yeah.
I'm over, I get the card, A R B.
I got an individual safety notice.
Boy, did I kick you, sorry.
No.
But, yeah, I mean, I... Back to what Kim was saying, we're still looking at various options for doing a new senior center, whether it's renovating, expanding the current one, whether it's building a new one, whatever, but, you know, obviously, there are programs there that I suspect Plymouth seniors will sometimes come up for.
Well, they might come up for it, and I, so my que, I was asking, you know, this subject came up...
I've met a couple of them.
They also go to Kingston.
Okay, and so, the question came up at a building committee meeting, so it was sort of, we were there talking about the building, and somebody in the audience said, oh, have you ever thought about, you know, combining with Plymouth and their senior, you know, their senior staff, and our director explained that you, that you don't really have paid staff, and that's something that was just a stipend, but that you don't have outreach programs where you're not, you know, you don't have an outreach person that's possibly in touch with the seniors that you have that are in, not jeopardy, but the ones that you've identified as high risk.
I don't know if Chris did that, I mean, there is a CLA, there's a committee, and they do regularly meet during the day, and they're the ones that arrange the activities.
It's pretty much all volunteer, yeah, she says. How good is that? Was mailed, the monthly newsletter was mailed to over seven hundred seniors to provide resources for legal services, fuel assistance, tax preparation, food and medical resources, health information assurance, social events, exercise classes, and library programs. And they do that all for free? Yep, also provided information on low-income housing, and handy persons who assist with home repairs, housekeeping, yard work, and snow removal, and then some adaptive equipment, so, yeah, they, um... Not interested in paying for that service, you're getting a freaking...
Well, but, but... But there's always talk that we need a senior center.
Right.
And then I think that...
You have three million?
Yeah, no.
There's another issue.
Nine hundred.
The police station.
Chris Moreno, our director, is leaving.
Yeah.
She's selling her house. So she's moving out of town. And like many things, things fall apart when you don't have the right person.
You don't have somebody in the leadership position.
Well, they cost more money. You get them done at the same level.
Right.
Right, because you-
I don't know, we haven't been able to find somebody so far. And that's, that's a real concern, because we've seen it with other, I don't want to get into that.
No, no, we understand. There's people, there are key people that have a passion, and they do a great job, and then when they go away-
And they've done it for a long time, and there's nobody really-
We had Sandra Henry.
Yeah.
She's moved out of town. Now Chris, who came in after, is moving out. We don't see the next person coming along.
We don't see the next generation, yeah.
Have you checked with our, Barbara, up in our senior citizens, do you mean the old people?
Where do you stand in council on aging? I know you were talking about a new senior center or-
Yeah, so right now, we, our town meeting supported the, looking at the renovating of the building. And right now, we're, Tom's been part of that, I don't know if you want to, but we're-
Well, we, in my personal opinion, we started down a road. We thought we were going to get a building inside the budget we were talking about, and somehow, the architects came back with a number that was just absolutely mind-boggling.
First mistake is to ask an architect.
Well, that was my feeling.
How many square feet were you looking at?
We were looking at about 2,500 square feet.
All right, you can put, you can put that on the ground for about 150,000 modular.
Well, we're-
I mean, without any, there's no, there's no-
No frills.
Architect.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could put a, that, the trailer that we had to buy out here to house people when we went to ALS, to house the overnight shifts and the regular shifts, that was 50,000 delivery, that's 11-
And you bought it?
1,145 square feet, yes. And if you double that of 1,145, you're now up to, what is that, 2,400 or something like that? And you put, you put a truss roof on it, and it looks perfectly good.
Well, you know, there's some things we have to do in terms of amount of rooms for various medical exams, and, you know, helping to prepare taxes and whatnot. But we're going to revisit this, at least that's my goal, is to revisit putting something on the ground. Because we can go the modular route, I know that there's been some pushback in the past because of what a modular structure may or may not look like, but at this point, it has-
Historical unit.
Yeah, well, we have to come in with something cost-effective, and the only way to-
Assistance.
Yeah, the only way to bring it in cost-effective is to at least look at modular.
Modular out there is, it's a green communities building, it's two-by-six construction, it's all wood, I mean, it's just all, all the high end. Well, we're a green community, it passes green community standards all the way around. In fact, it's somewhat better than green community standards. And if you take and order it like that, and do a truss roof on it rather than the little peak that they put on it, you know, you've got 2,400 square feet, and technically, if you, I mean, just if you put, if you double that, you'd have four bedrooms, I mean, you'd have six bedrooms and four bathrooms.
Well, we also, we also looked at doing a modular addition, too, and then, as things grow by committee, not to slam any committees, and that's not where I'm going, but there's that incremental thing where, oh, you know, if we did this, we can get future use of that. If we do this, we can get some use down the road of that, and wouldn't it be nice to have this?
The birdhouse turns into a treehouse.
Yeah, so, so it tends to grow and get a little beyond the original scope of the thing. But we got led down the road a little bit, and I'm a little angry at the architects because they should have known where this was going. It should not have come as a big surprise.
Well, they were told very clearly at the meeting that I attended, what, where we want to go and how much money we want to spend.
Exactly, and they were coming in within, a little above that range, but still doable. And then to come in at almost twice the money-
At the 12th hour.
You know, there was, there was no excuse for that. But they should have known.
We'll work it out, but so-
But, but we're going to work it, yeah.
So my question is also, you provide meals on wheels out of where?
We do.
Where do you provide it?
Well, they keep out of Peloponnesi.
Oh, do they?
I have no idea.
Oh, okay, all right.
That's what I heard as well.
Yeah, sure.
All right, so that's not an area that you're involved in.
And you're looking for drivers, so you have to tell me.
Um, I have done that, actually.
Yeah, she has.
But I haven't done it in over a year, but I did.
She's been busy with the-
With the dogs.
The dogs, yeah, she can't do everything.
She tries, though.
So what I was sort of wondering about is maybe some procurement things? If we can share anything with that, I don't know.
Well, I mean, we've, we've gone, we've done regional for our, most of our bigger budget things, so heating oil, we go through the county, they just went, they just, they're bidding. The vehicles and everything, they use, for the most part, the departments use the state contracts, or they use those metropolitan area plan commission contracts or something like that. Office supplies, Kingston's the lead community for office supply, I think, you know, half a dozen communities are part of that.
Do we do that?
Do we do that?
No, we don't have, but we don't use a tremendous amount of supplies again. I mean, it's really, really small.
How about the other things that Charlie was talking about?
Fuel oil, we don't use, we're all natural gas, we use no fuel oil at all anymore.
It's a green community, damn it all.
We are, we-
Are you a green community?
Yes, we are.
Yeah, okay, so-
We could have gone gas, but we didn't.
Well, we, we did-
And we have a right to farm, too, so you can bring your pigs over, too.
Well, under the, under the new marijuana laws, that's about to get really exciting. I'm just, I just want to tell you that, since you're in the high pay grade. You guys are going to have to deal with it.
But I mean, the thing is that you rapidly write out things to go that are significant enough, and the time to go out to bid for, you know, I'm, you know, you don't join bid in, you know, health insurance, for instance, we're through the, you know-
What about the highway? Asphalting and all stuff like that?
No, that's off the bid list, too, there's a list for that, isn't there?
Yeah, I think they may go out to forbid for sand, I think, sand and salt, I think, for most part, is regional. Gas and, gasoline and diesel, we do solo, because we're just, we've always watched the Plymouth County group, and we seem to get a better price differential for the markup for whatever. Whoever our vendors have been, they've been willing to knock off a penny or so. I mean, the thing is, it's not material. And if the difference between probably Plymouth County-
It's the personnel.
Might be a penny per gallon difference. It's not material, but we still, the thing is consistently, we're doing it, so, I mean, it's not that we could, I know, I know there are groups of communities that hire a joint permanent person, and, but we haven't, I mean, we haven't found the need to, you know, because we'd be throwing several thousand dollars in there, and we'd say, okay, we need to see some cost savings, but we're already regional, one way or the other, or state contracts for the most part, are the big ticket items.
And I've found, you may have found the same thing, that a lot of stuff that's on the state bid list, you can actually get it cheaper from, from somebody who's not on the state bid list. I don't know how that works, and I don't know if comp buys is going to change any of that, but just generally, the way it works. We're not huge consumers, I mean, our big money is, our big money is payroll, and the big payroll is, is the school. I mean, that's just the way it works for us, works for you, I'm sure the same way.
And we've already looked at regionalizing our elementary school, the last time we looked at it, I think it was about, Dana Parker was the superintendent, and we looked at-
It's been a while.
Yeah, we wouldn't want to go down that road because silverware.
Dana Parker, who was a former superintendent, convened a study to look at regionalizing the elementary school.
In Kingston?
Yes, the three towns, yeah.
But that did not, it did not-
We didn't want to do that because the health insurance costs would go up because of these silver-like numbers, and so it's 75, 25.
Yeah, no, I think we're all good on that.
You're 50/50, Tim.
We did get an email from Joy, and I can't remember all of it.
Oh, the rural communities?
Yeah, Blackwell, yes, but-
Good. I don't know if you guys are, would be qualified for that.
It's to increase, or where's my phone? Money from the state up to $500 per student, and I don't remember anything else right now.
She hasn't said, I only remember seeing anything.
Yeah, I was the first to hear that.
Oh, today? Today.
Okay, well, see myself now.
I don't know where my phone went. No.
I didn't touch it.
Maybe it's in the office, I may have left it in the office. Yeah, I can email that, I can send that to Charlie.
I think Joy said she was sending it up.
Okay, did she?
I know, Tom, you're here in the building department, like, can you see any, like, conservation agents or health agent?
That would be where, I would think maybe we could do some stuff, but I don't, I don't know how it would actually work, and whether there's a cost savings or not. I was thinking of things, for instance, this is way out there, you don't get that much out of your boards anymore, because we've cut very demanding on our board members. I'm thinking in terms of planning. I've always thought that we should have at least a part-time town planner. I didn't know if that was something, but that's an added expense, it's not someplace where we're going to save anything. Sharing perhaps a conservation agent might be a place, because we don't have one, I know you don't have one, and it's tough to get board members to give up their day to go out and do things, and the expertise level sometimes isn't necessarily there, and that's not too, you know.
And we use your, your-
What is that, John Chesfield?
Right.
Something like that?
Or somebody. Or, I mean, there's, there's some folks around who are versed in DEP regulations, that, you know, could at least go out on a call, somebody that we could use together. I don't know if it's somebody we would just use on a per diem kind of, for instance, the way I'm compensated here is per inspection. You know, that's not a terrible way to go. But maybe use somebody where we share so much territory, if you will, the issues tend to be similar. Inspection services in terms of the health agent, we share a health agent. It would be an easy combination for building. The only dicey part of that is zoning. You have a zoning enforcement officer, which I think works much better.
Separate from the building inspector?
Separate from the building inspector, yeah. It works better for me, let me, let me clarify that. After 20 years, I really don't want to do zoning anymore. But that's an area where you might be able to find some savings, you'd still need an admin in the building, we've got a program going on here that's working finally, I think that was a great step forward for all of us. I mean, that's an area we could explore. You know, it wouldn't take that much more, I mean, I effectively did it for four years or so, on a part-time basis here, and full-time in Halifax, that's doable. Our budget downstairs probably would support it, you could use the same alternate inspector, the local inspector, you wouldn't have to duplicate that kind of stuff. Not that we spend money for it here, except for bringing him in just to keep him up to speed as to what's going on, and to be available for when I'm not available. That's an area where we could find something, are you going to have huge savings? Probably not. But I mean, it's an area that you could combine.
Yeah, you guys have your own veterans agent, right?
We do.
We, well, we, yeah, we, sheep services also, Plimpton, I mean Plymouth and us, and I'm not sure, what does Roxanne do, any of the others? She does a real, real good job for us. Again, she's here one night a week, and her covers and faces. Let me throw out assessing, has anybody ever, I mean, regional assessing is done in other places, and it's done very effectively, it may be some savings there, I don't know, there may be some savings there, at least for, for us, and in terms of us paying you for the service, there may be some savings there for you as well.
That, that, that has some merit.
I mean, you, you may, we would still have to have somebody to carry the office hours, you know, you're a clerk person like we have now, but in terms of having a principal assessor who does the heavy lifting in the assessing department.
Do you have one?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Do you, is yours full-time?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, and I, I think that's an area where-
Be worth looking into.
I mean, that's, that's easy with computers to do this kind of stuff, it's, and the billing, you may use the same people, I mean, all of that.
Well, you've got to, you've changed from the service that we were using, you went to Vision, we're still using PK, I mean, there might be some conversion issues, but, but I, in terms of staffing, I think there could be some savings for you.
And how many people in your assessing department?
Three.
Well, two and, two and a half, I guess.
Yeah.
Well, there's three people there.
In addition to the-
Well, I'm, I'm thinking in hours.
Yeah, you got a principal who's full-time.
Yeah.
Two, Debbie, who's almost full-time.
Almost full-time, and then Sheila, who's like 24 hours.
Okay.
That could, that could be blended.
Channel up that sometime.
Yeah, we're in, we have two, and one is 18 and a half hours, because she's another state retiree, but that's our principal assessor, and, and then we have the assistant, assistant assessor Wendy, and I'm not sure exactly.
You guys like those state retirees, maybe I can come over and get a job.
Who's the actual-
We'll fill it right out. I was thinking the same thing when I flushed the car.
Actually, yeah.
But she's the one that does that.
But I mean, there may be some, that may be-
That's an area-
It's an easy mix, it's universally the same in every town, in terms of how it's done, and who you deal with, and what the state, you know, the state requirements are.
Lucky we that we have one of our assessors at the table that could probably-
We can, we can look into that.
Yeah, and I mean, we're still on camera, aren't we? Yeah, okay.
That has some potential.
Enough said for me, enough said for me, but I mean, I just, I think that would, that may be somewhere where we could save some money. Again, I don't think we're ever going to get in a situation where we're going to save, you know, a lot, a lot of money, but I mean, we may be able to get it, you know, get something where we're saving, you know, 10 or 20,000 here, 10 or 20,000 there, and it certainly helps.
Because that's us.
Yeah, at all piles off.
The other piece it brings, too, is the more you get, you get more professional ones.
Yes.
And that's, that's what we can always use.
And it, it also gives you consistency, right? If you've got somebody with some personal, professional skills, you're consistent in what type of things you're going to do.
One other area that we don't really have a good handle on is technology.
Oh, that's a great one.
Yeah.
I know you've just hired a person, right?
Right, but my understanding, my understanding has been, we were looking at you before we were hiring someone, this was a couple of years ago, we were, had reached out to other communities, and Plimpton has been doing it with third-party, and they seem satisfied with that.
And that may be the way to go, but in a sense, we, it would be good to talk through how you address technology over a computer, because getting the person, whether it's in-house or out-of-house, is just finding the right person. We have somebody that everybody seems to like right now.
I mean, our total budget for IT, for this building and the fire departments combined, the police are separate, is less than 25,000 a year.
So add in the police.
I mean, well, again, police tend to operate independently.
As do ours, I mean-
Yes, as do ours, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, one, it still needs to help out, but-
Might police talk to you and get some earnings from you.
Yeah, they'll sell their own, but they'll bring Caesar if they need it.
Oh, man, sorry, I'll pet.
We're spending-
No, it's all right, Troy.
You want a glass of water? I'll get a cup of water.
Okay, that's, well, right.
How about a punch in the mouth?
Water, water's bad, but water's like coffee. You drink coffee in the morning, it's just two negative things to you. It wakes you up, and you realize where you are, and don't want to be there.
I don't think there's a lot of savings, unless you've got a full-time employee.
No, it's 25 hours a week. We're not, and I'm not proposing to be, we were at 20, we bumped it to 25, and I, at this point, don't see a real reason to increase it.
It has been helpful for us to have somebody on board that we can go to.
And someone's there, he's there every day unless he's on vacation, which means I can say to someone, somebody, he'll be here, as opposed to when we've got to help from the outside, and we've done it on an as-needed basis, it may be a couple of days.
Because you're not a priority.
Yeah.
But I can't see us hiring somebody, though. I can't see us hiring somebody.
No, I mean, but again, I mean, we may be, and we can't use theirs, because in that case, we'd be paying them, but they're now kicking into, you know, a full-time portfolio.
No, we're already over 20.
We're already giving them.
Is it already a benefited position?
Yeah, well, we're at 25, he's benefited, so for instance, if you said, you know, well, we need him five hours a week, or six, seven hours a week, or whatever.
We're going to burn out terror, if we don't terror show us, huh?
But you could, you could contract him for that.
Right.
The only, the only thing I'll say, though-
Responsibilities will be taken from her.
The only pothole I can see is that Caesar's working over Pembroke Hospital also.
I mean, they're doing a lot of the computer stuff on there.
I have time enough to do that.
As far as-
But maybe within-
Can you repeat what you just said, I miss what you said?
Caesar, our IT guy, he works at Pembroke Hospital. But he also has a part-time gig over at Pembroke Hospital.
Oh, okay.
He started off with us at twenty and then, and it's not a full-time job, so, you know, sir, you know, I think it was maybe three or four months ago, we started working for Pembroke Hospital.
So that's why he's been acting strange.
Well, we're not a full-time job either.
No, but my point is I don't know whether he has enough hours-
He may not even be interested in-
And I mean, we use essentially a sole proprietor, but he also does the Fall River Housing Authority, which is the eight-hundred-pound gorilla in his room as far as, you know, as far as business goes, so-
Right.
Again, like Charlie says, it's really nice. If I call him up and tell him it's an emergency, we can get him, but if it's, if it's in the course or normal, you know, hey Mike, will you take a look at this, it may be a day or two before he gets to take a look at it.
But what if we sort of handle it in the same way, that within Caesar's actual hours that he's at our town hall, if you guys have an emergency or if you have a need and he's busy, why couldn't we contract him within the twenty-five hours that he has?
That must mean he's sitting around a lot on your dime then.
Well, that's-
I mean, he does make his rounds, but, I mean, sometimes there are days that there aren't really big issues going around.
Why don't we talk through, get the other boards heads to talk through the need?
Yeah.
You know?
It would be nice to have somebody-
How often do you need to use them?
The number two IT guy, even though he's the department head, is me, so when Sheila was on vacation for the last week and a half, when, hey, this, you just run into weird stuff. Highway Department, they're, um, she couldn't print. Um, well, actually couldn't, she didn't have internet, but the other two computers in the building did, okay? What's the elementary thing you check?
The plug.
Man, it's good.
Did you fix it?
No, I didn't know, I fixed it because my wife is like, well, in essence, yes, she has-
Connection.
She had somehow turned off the surge protector or the, the power strip and-
And you're talking to a person that doesn't even have email, I don't know.
The computer's working and everything, but, and everybody else that's had the internet, but it was, you know, but that, you know, I had to leave the-
It takes time out of your day to do this, right?
Right. Now, mind you, Caesar would have, I hope for, would have figured it the same thing out about the same amount of time and, but I was, she didn't have anybody else to call and she couldn't figure out obviously on her own, so I was the guy. And, but that's been a big relief, I mean, there's more than enough on my plate without the IT stuff. And the thing is, in terms of prior, okay, I'm supposed to be working on the budget or union contract, okay, but this camp person can't do any of their work unless their computer's working, that's urgent.
Right.
Despite the fact that it's only one person and I'm supposed to be doing these things. I can throw Caesar at that.
Okay, so another thing that was brought up to me, actually by my sister-in-law who works in the highway department out in Brookfield, with the other Brookfields, they've kind of formed a cooperation that if they're, um, resurfacing a road, putting on lines or whatever and they're, they're hiring an outside contractor, he starts at the end of one, of one town and just goes through all the towns. And so you only have one setup fee. So each town isn't paying to set up again.
That's what I talked about earlier about the asphalt and the line and stuff, especially fifty-eight and one of those.
Do we do that for Franklin?
Oh, no, we put this top quote-
Okay, so we're already doing this.
Well, I don't know how it would be, but Jim does tug to-
Yeah, because they only had a base now.
And she said the same thing about, you know, they got a new sign-making machine. So one town doesn't need a sign-making machine. Three towns together could use it. And, you know, if, if these things come up, maybe we can work together.
Like capital items.
Well, if one thing you have in place is that we, we're willing to cooperate with you on those ventures, many changes, you're not going to run into a stall wall, you know, if it's-
Capital is such, capital is power-strung.
Right, because you, you started that program.
We put that bylaw in, that home rule petition in and, and all of a sudden, it's like, I think there's, I think this May, there's a million dollars in there. And, and there's also a provision to bump up general stabilization. So that's been getting bumped up by a certain percentage every year. And now they've taken the caps off, so I guess we'll never stop putting in it. In fact, there's talk, and I think good talk, that we should modify the bylaw to the amount of money, I mean, it was thirty-five percent of the revenue, tax revenue-
That's a lot for capital.
Yeah.
Oh, for industrial.
Only for industrial zone. But, I mean, we've, we've put away a five-hundred-and-ninety thousand one year, six-hundred-and-ten before that. It, it is, it is tending to go down now because nothing at Cisco is new anymore, so, you know, and it's appreciates, but we're still putting in a lot of money, so-
Between stabilization and capital stabilization, we have two million dollars.
Awesome.
We have another four, a million eight, nine, and then we have another four hundred and some more change in CPC.
Wow.
So we're up to about two million two some change.
That's very good for your capital budget. It may hurt your, it must hurt a little bit your operation because you haven't been able to grow that because of that.
We've got a police station we're looking at.
That's the problem, Kim, is what happens is, you know, your operational tends to want to grow, I mean, wants to, wants to explode, but I mean, it tends to have to grow a little every year.
Elementary school was available in our town, the whole elementary school turns to police stations and we're going to have to build-
That's why I say the thirty-five may be a little steep, they want to cut that down to thirty or so and modify what we're putting into stabilization to lower that, that would give us a big bump in operation.
Do you have a ten-year capital plan?
We're working on it.
Okay, perfect.
Ten? Think of five.
It was five. Oh, it is five, yeah.
Do you, you got the compact grants too? And yours was in financial planning?
Yes, it was. We had already had a capital planning committee, we've had it for a number of years and we've, we've done, I think we have ten for building, like, we, we've identified roofs and, you know, heating systems and we've been able to stick to it actually and our, with our new chief, we were getting an engine, we ended up getting the grant, so that was great.
So have you created, we had Rick Kingsley come in and create the model?
Um, we're working-
Or Vera Kinshir.
Okay, but the same thing, create a five-year operational and capital planning model.
Well, the capital plan we're working on, not the operational.
Yeah, right.
I mean, the operations, I mean, Sandy knows the tack on myself, I mean, we've talked about it, we haven't seen it really as serving a major purpose for us.
He actually created-
But the capital, we definitely wanted to do it, we're doing, so we're doing that, we're doing financial policies, and we're actually also working on IT security as a third capital.
That's the one we've got left.
Yeah, the IT security, we haven't done that one yet.
So it, I would just look at, once you get your capital plan, then you're going to know what percentage makes sense for you, because I know, only from sitting at school committee meetings and knowing that from a small community standpoint, we struggle with the same things, our revenues for our operating, you know, doesn't always increase as quickly as our expenses, especially when you have a sped student that may move in and those are the things that sort of drives your, and really for us too, vocationals increasing over the last years because more and more kids are interested in that. So those are areas too that we need to look at, but, you know, it, it's, it's a tough balance because you need to make sure that you have equipment that the people can use and it's up to date, but it can't always be at the expense of the operation as well. So it's a, it's a tough balance.
Yeah, it is, it's a balancing act, that's for sure.
And again, some of these things may not save us both a lot of money, but it's definitely something because when you have one-line item explode or you're negotiating contracts, then it's something to help up, upset it.
I mean, there's a possibility, in, in terms of fire, it's a little bit harder to save money if you consolidate two fire departments. If you consolidate two police departments, there's a little bit more opportunity to save money there. But I don't know how you're staffed overnight on, on, on your police department.
We just have two.
You have two officers.
Yeah, it's two, it's twenty-four-seven.
Two officers, twenty-four-seven.
Yeah, and we, and we have one shift that's three.
And we're moving, um, we're moving, we've almost attained that, we actually would, I can't understand, solo people, you know, but you can do solo on a shift at that. But sometimes where you've got two cruisers on the road and we've got two cruisers on the road, you can get one cruiser, you can kick one cruiser out of that, one, one, one out of that and because you've got that response from, uh, from both towns.
I mean, I've always thought about it as, you know, a series of pieces on the chessboard and if one of them has to move in a certain direction, you move the others to cover and you can reduce the effort.
Of course, it's all arguable because we both have police interests, but I mean, you know-
Well, we don't have minimum man.
Okay, I don't think-
But I, mind you, if we're saying to them, well, you have to cover Plington and, yeah, I agree.
Yeah, and I don't know, I mean, I have no idea, but there may be some opportunity there just to get together and, 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 you know, you've got the backup.
That was mentioned once a few years back and they, the first thing that came up, well, we have mutual aid, we could open it anyway to help them if they need it.
Well, that's true, but I mean, if you, if you, if you was, you know, I mean, you know, you assign the patrols and they're out there and, again, you get into the provincial thing because I sat, Charlie was in on part of that, the, the eight-town dispatch that Old Colony did several years ago.
Yep.
And, um, we're New England, it's provincial, nobody wants to give up anything.
I'm telling you right now though, of those, I think there were thirteen towns that participated in that study and, and Duxbury is looking at other towns and so we're all going to probably end up together at a regional.
I heard today that they've, now Rochester is going with them and Plymouth.
Plymouth, Maine, I think that they've shown an interest.
So I mean, if Plymouth goes with them, I mean, you know, that's as big as everybody else they've got and it's going to, I mean, it's, I know you're doing it, but I mean, dispatch is where you're saving an awful lot of money. We did a three-town rec in my last job and, um, and it worked really good, but it, it didn't, didn't work out all that well because again, you provincial, you had one department in one town that was unhappy because they weren't calling the shots anymore and their station was dark. And we were the host town providing it, the town that I worked in, so of course we weren't dark. And, um, and it created a lot of problems, it was difficult.
That was where some of the pushback came back for us too, you know, we're going dark and, and that's kind of scary for a lot of people.
And for us?
And for us, but when you thought it through, we were actually going to be able to provide a little bit more even though we were dark.
Well, the situation is when you walk into the lobby and you, I mean, how we set it up and, and essentially how it'll be set up when we get better lines here is, if somebody walks into the lobby and pushes the button, I mean, on the dispatcher comes on a screen, now they don't know whether the dispatcher is sitting, you know, eighteen inches behind that wall or in Fort Lauderdale, Florida, as long as they can accomplish the same goals. And, um, I mean, if you do that with a, you know, with a card slider, you can spit out, you know, accident reports, anything else they might need.
You go to the-
But that's the, that's the biggest money that's worth it.
The biggest problem that, at least that was said to me and during the period when we were thinking seriously about doing, when we got into it, was the fact that, well, what happens, they don't know, if they're in Duxbury, they don't know our streets. I said, yep, but the policemen and the firefighters, they're getting the call, they should know your streets, right?
Yeah.
They're the ones that live in your town.
They're the ones that-
Or they're working your town, yeah.
I mean, Duxbury came right up to speed.
And that was a big concern.
I mean, they came right up to speed, they know the town, I, they know the town far better than Mass 911 ever knew the town.
Well, for us, it's, there's, there's an added advantage that a lot of our personnel went there, so we, we have that built in, you know, so-
I mean, I don't know what arrangement you got with them, but I mean, you get a tremendous amount of money from the state in terms of grants, 911 grants.
Oh yeah, he's done really well.
And it really drops the cost.
Yeah, I mean, it was definitely a hard decision on our part and as Troy said, we did have some pit pushback certainly about the dark station because that's a little bit of a change for us and, you know, as you said, we're putting things in, that we have a safe room, we're going to have the camera, and so it really should be seamless.
Because you've got officers on the road, it's not like they're not, you know, it's not like they're far away.
Right.
You didn't have any snacks and coffee?
And honestly, we had more walk-ins in our fire station for medicals than we did issues at the police station, so the fact that we have additional staffing at night has really helped because it used to be when the first ambulance was out, we'd have somebody show up at the station on a medical and where the officer stays back, there's always somebody there, so that's helpful.
Do you get a lot of grants from the fireside?
Yeah, this new chief-
Jason has been tremendous.
He is an amazing, he's so great. Since he's been here in the last couple of years, we've gotten the ladder, we got, we get a, no, did we get the, yeah, we did get-
Yeah, we did get it.
We got an ambulance, yeah.
Uniforms, equipment.
Yeah.
Under aquatics.
How do you have that structured with her, is she an employee or?
No, no.
No, chief does it.
The chief does it.
Oh, the chief does it.
Yeah.
And he, you know, when, when he, you know, when he was first approached, he was looking at different grants that would assist, so he came up with this one and, so he's definitely such a blessing for our community. Yeah, just really-
Money that's available.
Very lucky.
And that's huge, two-hundred thousand dollars to look at, you know, exploring.
For sure.
Well, and also the hope, baby, is if we don't need two-hundred thousand dollars to look at this, that he's looking at, can the two-hundred thousand go to help, do whatever needs to be done?
To forming it, yes.
Yes, if, or no, or even if it's to upgrade a building or if it's, so that the manpower, the numbers, like, we, you know, we've looked at the numbers before, you know, the fireside and if you've done that, that if we can do the grunt work of the research and how to implement it, then that two-hundred thousand dollars can be actual things.
Used to.
Right, right.
Well, I've enjoyed our meeting.
Thank you so much for coming over, this has been great.
This is, we should do this once.
I know, we really should, it's been great.
That is good.
Even if we're not talking about resolution, we can talk about the different things that we face and how we handle them.
I, I think because we, we all face similar problems and one might be more exaggerated than the others, but we still have the same decision, you know, and my famous philosophy and Kim always says, a fair, firm and consistent, and the more knowledge I know about what's going on in other towns, making it a lot easier to make decisions.
We can learn a lot from you.
And we can learn from you as well. I mean, you're doing a great job on your capital.
Just knowing Christine, I mean.
You're smooth.
I see her every place I go.
I know, I'm like a bad penny man, turning up. All right, so then we're ready to adjourn then?
Do we want to continue open for a few minutes?
I believe that we adjourn.
If you would like to, yes, you can do that.
We can adjourn.
Maybe it stopped pouring, it was raining so hard on the way.
You're making up the drought in one night.
I think so, I could not believe it.
It is, it's crazy.
I could not believe it, and then I thought, oh, these are the nights, like the winter nights when you walk out of town hall and the snow has fallen on your car and you're brushing it off, going, oh, I should be home.
That's a very cute ad.
I want to be home, I want to be home, it's in front of a fire. So just let me know and we can set up the meeting.
Perfect.
And again, there's no pressure on either of us, we can just-
Well, you know, I just think that this, um-
This was good.
Definitely has potential.
I, I, I like the meeting of the minds, minds, whatever, good changes, but-
Mine is good.
The one thing that I like and you guys seem to have the same thing in working or in yours, that we have somebody with expertise in each area. Me, I'm, I'm the one that sits there and says nothing because I'm a people person.
No.
You know?
You're just the pretty face?
Why you want to put me in that category?
Talk to me a little bit.
I don't think she knew that forty-seven years ago, they had the pretty face.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you, this has been great and I'll, I'll wait to hear from you on a, on a date.
So we're going to stay here for a few minutes?
Okay, very good.
Thank you, sir.
I tell you, this is having trouble.
So I'll see you. I'd say happy holidays.
Bye-bye, down low.
Merry Christmas.
I'll see you for that.
Thanks, man.
Thank you so much.
No, thank you for inviting us.
Thanks for coming over. Yeah.
Actually, your ride's no shorter than mine.
No.
Where are you going, Charlie?
In general.
I know, we worry about driving.
I know, especially in the winter.
The problem is that we're doing a house renovation right now, so we're actually living in-
We don't have enough.
Which is a village just on the border of Princeton and Warwick, so seventy-five minutes.
We made a joke that we were going to renovate our fire station.
I know, but I went to a wedding and I couldn't find a place.
You can get a, a truck trailer. Yeah, if they're retired, you can probably just stay here.
All right, guys.
The lights are always on in the trailer.
Remember tomorrow's another day.
Bye. Good night, Charlie.
Brady?
Yeah.
The, um, what, nice to see you again.
I don't know where you people are on the fire. It, um, it's still, yeah, it's still hard for me to understand all the numbers that can come together and I'd really like to sit down with both chiefs and Kim.
I think it'd be great and, and you, you're a numbers guy and Kim's a number person, I think that's terrific.
I don't know where we go with that, but at least we get on the same baseline.
Well, right, and just make sure we're comparing apples to apples.
Yes, yeah. The other thing I would like to learn, obviously they have a very smart chief, we need to just capture what we can from them.
Yeah, pick his brain on the grants.
The other thing is, it might make sense, yeah, you're right, especially on grants, we should be doing a lot better, is whether we should have, there used to be a fire board here way back, okay, and back when-
What did they do?
Actually, at that time, they reported to the fire, the fire chief.
Okay.
This is going. But it would be nice to have a, a fire board, because the thing that bothers me is, I don't know whether the real cost of a fire, the fire station EMS after revenue coming in, is two-hundred thousand going to five-hundred thousand over time?
There's a little structure.
Or is it just going to remain there? If I felt comfortable, then I would have no problem talking to townspeople.
And if you don't have, I mean, if it's not a contentious board, we add that.
Whether it's at a town meeting or wherever, to start the expectation right now, I hate to set an expectation because I'm not sure how it's going to pan out.
Oh yeah, break that grade.
Right, well, it's so early.
What exactly did you tell him in the letter?
So that's what I would like to look at.
All right, yeah, well, I just want to stay more or less on the same page.
The thing is that it seems like our concert is going to go up and up.
Yeah, that's on the frame.
And, and I really think that, you know, once the baby boomers are gone, once, once we're gone, there isn't going to be the revenue coming in.
And I was worried that it was just going to-
So we're going to have to combine or do something, something's got to change.
I don't think, let us just go to Halifax, then option one. I don't think, let us just go to Halifax, then option one.
Option one. Eight minutes seems, I don't think that's the best plan.
Well, and it's just Halifax. I just want to stay more or less on the same page.
We need to work together. We need the substation here.
Right, we need a substation here.
And that goes.
Okay.
Well, I think, you know, my hope is that.
The assessing is a tricky one, but it's something you need to.
Definitely should look at that.
Yes.
They jumped on that, too. That would be helpful.
A lot of towns, the assessor reports to the board select.
Whoever put it in would have to.
And it is only a majority vote at a town meeting to do that.
And I mean, that's easy enough to do.
So that would be a simple warrant article?
Passes by a majority, it's done.
As opposed to the board of assessors?
Okay.
Right.
But then what does a board of assessors do?
Well, you wouldn't have one.
So there would have to be two warrant articles to eliminate the board of assessors?
Probably would be combined the same way, but whatever, there could be two. And I'm not sure that that would be the right way to go, but at least sharing the assessment might make a lot of sense. It's going to professionalize the department even more so. And I don't know, I assume Deb does a pretty good job.
Thanks for the visit.
Thank you very much.
Nice to see you again, Charlie.
Drive safe, Charlie.
So, areas we can think about. So I'll reach out to Kim.
And I've got an Old Colony Planning Council meeting tomorrow. I will touch base with them and find out, because I asked, I emailed to see who's the contact for this Delta grant.
Okay.
And they never heard back. So I will ask tomorrow night and.
Could you send me, you talked about how other counties got the technology grants, but we didn't put in enough. But where do I go to see what they got?
I don't know if it's posted.
You gave us a list, or when they announced the grants, or maybe Dale sent it out.
That's where the grants came.
When the grants were announced, it said what they were announced for, or what they were given for. And other towns had these, like, grandiose plans, and we had this little thing.
Must be online.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for.
Maybe on the Community Compact website?
Community Compact grant, Google it, you'll probably begin, Massachusetts or Mass, you'll probably pull it up that way. But I know it does start, they're opening the grants again in January, so it'll be good to do it. I don't know what this will cost. I want to get this priced out, you know, put in a regular video system in here that's all hardwired back to there and up to there with a screen that comes down and goes up. You know, it's just a good presentation.
Could you talk to Akers out of Brockton? And stop in at the.
I think I did check with them.
Stop in at the Halifax Library, and ask to see their community room, and ask to see that, they're in love with it. They just put it in, $5,500 bucks. It does everything you do.
Essentially, that's what I wanted to put in here. When we first started out, I looked at it when we first redid this room, and it was like, well, you can put it over there and hangs, it drops down, it's all motorized, the screen, I mean, the projector pops down here, it gives you a nice clear picture, blah, 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 all of that.
Yeah, it's pretty snappy.
But I mean, that's only $5,500.
That's not, that's pretty gross money.
If you could look at the technology side, we'll try to find out where the grant side is by taking a look at it.
Yeah, see what they, I mean, I'll take a note on.
But I know Akers did that one. And I know Jean's the librarian over there, and when I asked her, well, how did it go, she said, the person who is Akers, whoever that is, was great. But the people who were coming in the door oftentimes were young, it's a kids, but she meant that. So it'd be hooves to make, but if we know that upfront, we can say, okay, these are the people we want. Plus, then we can find out who Akers can bet on.
And that's not something they can't do. They have all the connections to do that as well.
Yeah, they've already said they want to be part of that.
Who did the one at the school? Who did the one at the school?
That's fair. We did one at the school, too.
Akers, I think, did the one at the school.
Did they?
I think they did the one at the school, yeah.
Call Peter.
Yeah.
Dale, I know it's a little unfair to ask you this already, but can you put together some minutes for tonight?
No votes taken.
You can't.
It's just discussion.
It's going to be, it's going to be who was president, what was the, you know, in general terms, what.
What time we start and what time we finish.
There's a recording of it, even though it's not official.
We discussed fire and a few other.
And possible, yeah, shared services, shared service opportunities.
If nothing else, I like the, just the information I gained. I thought it was well worth having while I was at that.
It's a lot of stuff, it's pretty handy. You know, I don't know if there's a giant amount of savings, but there's some small amount of savings. But they're truly a sister town to Plimpton in terms of problems, in terms of what you have to set up.
I was going to say that, but I didn't know.
Well, you know, and it's, I think we're in a pretty unique situation here where these two chiefs are willing to work together to look at this. This is really a unique opportunity here.
I give credit to one or two.
Absolutely, absolutely, that he is willing to look at this.
And what didn't come up, and I was going to bring it up, I wouldn't want to jump into the discussion, but when we had, when the ambulance study committee was active, we hired an outside consultant to come in and come back with a letter, and the bottom line was, so you can do it this way, which is the way they're doing it now, but over the long haul, you're really not going to be able to do it that way. You're going to have to hire, you know, you're going to have to hire some full-time people to cover it. So essentially, what you end up with is, you know, what you'll end up with is, you'll end up with two full-time cross-trained firefighter paramedics on the first shift, two on the second shift, or, you know.
Or human.
And then overnight, you know, overnight on stipends, or however you want to do that.
But if we got them, we can't keep them.
I can't believe you got people sleeping in a trailer for $10 an hour who are paramedic trained. That's just tough.
We're going to lose the people if we don't bring it from the 10 to the 20, 21 and change.
And we need to look at what Halifax is doing. It is going to cost us some money.
That's another reason. We've got to make sure we understand.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, you've got to make sure you've got the most efficient system going too. And that, again, I mean, it's not impossible to, it's not impossible to do, which it's fairly easy to do. But it's going to cost, it's going to cost money. The only benefit you find in that is people will vote for it. You talk about public, EMS, particularly, particularly EMS, town meeting will vote for it. They didn't even bat an eye at voting for the upgrade to, from BLS to ALS. I mean, at the town meeting, it was very little discussion. People thought, yay, let's do that. We need that. We want that service, and they want it. And.
You know, it depends. And the only problem.
People may think, like you and I, because we're older and it's a little bit different for us, that, but, you know, family people with kids, they don't care.
They don't care. They don't care.
Though I've seen, you know, when Howard was on, he tried to get it passed, we voted it down.
Right.
Halifax has a problem right now. They have a teabody group, for better or worse. They were going to buy the Four Seasons.
Yes.
And they got voted down because all these people showed up. We're starting to see a little of that.
With the advent of social media.
You're exactly right. And it's going to be interesting at this next town meeting to see whether that's gel or not.
I'm not sure that the ultimate answer to this whole social media phenomenon that goes on in this town, every town now, they're all like that. You know, they're all like that, and you have the people who run on very little information, and make big grandiose statements, and just basically shake the trees. I'm not sure that the way to handle that is not to have your own, our, the town have its own, this is the town of Plimpton official webpage, whatever it happens to be.
Well, you attended that seminar. Is there any way we can get that recreated for all of us?
Well, there would just have to be one person that manages it, that does all the postings.
No, no, but I mean, could we get somebody to give that presentation to us? I would love to.
You know what? I can contact the woman that gave it and see if she'd be willing to come down here. But it was amazing, absolutely amazing. I think it was the town of Ashburn?
This was at the DOR meeting.
Maybe, you know what?
This was at the big DOR meeting, the.
MMA.
MMA, yeah.
Okay. And, yeah, she was supposed to email me the information, but she never did. And it was.
She's got a PowerPoint, maybe.
She's got a, what's I said, just give me your PowerPoint.
Yeah.
I assume, though, she was really.
She was very good. She was very good. Let's see. Mastering the Art of Town Communication, it was Julie Jacobson, who's the town administrator for Auburn. She's the one that.
That's just south of Worcester.
Yeah. And that's exactly how they got this under control, was they have their own that's official. They don't respond to the other ones. They just, this is the official.
Well, you'll come onto the town site to ask a question or make a statement, and usually somebody can answer that intelligently, diffuses anything before it starts. And if you get stuff, you have, you know, you have admin rights, you just go hit the button and get rid of it. Just, you know, we're not going to tolerate any, but it takes somebody to do that.
Right.
Just like it does with the website. And you could incorporate the two together for that.
Well, actually, and this, I think, might be more of the wave, you know, the wave of the future is this, rather than even the website. Because this is what young people are using. Not even just young people, a lot of people are on social media.
Actually.
We have a president-elect who was huge on social media, and actually, I mean, he just did it, no one else had done it, everybody, nobody even took it seriously when he was doing it, but obviously it worked. I mean, it helped him out. He has 26 million people following him on Twitter.
At Plimpton, it has turned around since.
But that's not an official.
No, I know it's not official, but it has not become antagonistic the way it was two years ago. Two years ago was.
Well, it gets like that.
Well, and I think it depends on towns or what's facing.
The climate.
Yeah, exactly. What's going on.
This town was a lot more contentious two years ago, even three years ago. And it's changed recently. It's much better than it was from my standpoint. And I mean, I never really took the heat on any of it, but, well, sort of I did, but that's another story. But I mean, it wasn't, you know, it wasn't directed at me, but it's much less contentious, much more cooperative now. You guys all get along pretty well, you know, you do your things. You disagree, but you're getting your stuff done.
Right.
And that's the way it's supposed to work.
As long as you're respectful, I mean, you don't have to agree on everything. You can agree to disagree, and, right.
And, you know, and it's, I think it's made a big difference. And when you don't have that, when you don't have somebody stirring the pot all the time, it makes, you know, it makes a big difference.
Yeah, you can get work done and do your job, yeah.
Right. It makes a huge.
Shall we sign off?
So, yes, thank you for watching, if you did, and good night.